Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Spokane City Council's legislative agenda for Monday, July 10, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the universal, the liberty of us all.
And Ms. Fister, can you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and I just want to acknowledge a little bit of the potential unspoken in the room is that this is my last night presiding over a city council meeting, and I'm joined with my longtime assistant Hannah Lee Allers, also her last night here, too, as well. But let us move on, and first, we have another edition of Poetry at the Podium brought to us by Spokane Arts, and I'd like to invite John Browning to come up and read "In West Central." John, come on up.
They say the people creep all night on Broadway. They say bongs is buzzing all night long on Boone. But when you wander down the street without a dollar, all tired and beat, long hours, low pay is the treat in West Central. They say she couldn't last that long on Broadway. They say the neighborhood is far too cruel. She may be humble, but she's got pride. Charges to work with a confident stride. Make sure her babies have a guide in West Central. The children scorch their souls on Maxwell. The pavement's so hot, it will melt their soul. They are racing down to the pool. The hood is hot, but the pool is cool. Hanging out, they're no fools in West Central. A teenager rolls down the road on Gardner. Twenty miles an hour on wheels of steel. He hits a crack and he goes down. His skateboard spins round and round. He gets back riding and aching his crown in West Central. They say there is gold on Summit Boulevard. Where castles sleep beside the sky. A hooded man mines through the trash, looking for treasure, something to sell for cash, something to add to his stash in West Central. They say they play chicken trapped on Gardner. Narrow houses on a narrower street. A man holds in his Escalade by a rusty cobalt unafraid. Screaming, she honks her horn and he just stays in West Central. The buck is hiking down the road on Broadway. Four points bowed, he eats the flowers in the yard. Don't worry, he won't bite, won't even put up a fight. Just munch on your garden all the night in West Central.
Woo-hoo! Great, John. And West Central's number-one fan on the council is coming to give you your certificate.
That was so good.
Thank you so much. That was great.
All right, next up, we have visitors to make a special presentation to us, the Dan Packer Award from the Washington Fire Chiefs Association, and it's going to be presented by President Steve Brooks and Executive Director Steve Wright from the Fire Chiefs Association. If you both could come up and tell us what's going on here.
Well, thank you for having us this evening. My name's Steve Wright. I'm the Executive Director from Washington Fire Chiefs Association, and Chief Brooks from Lacey Fire is the President of the Washington Fire Chiefs Association this year. Each year, our association selects a Washington Fire Chief of the Year. The award is in honor of Chief Dan Packer, who was on our board back in the 2003-4-5 era and who perished tragically in a wildfire incident in California in 2008. Chief Packer's leadership examples that he set for the fire service carry forward to this day, and the award was named in his honor. Each year, our association puts out a call for nominees, and we receive them from around the state. Our association has 350 member agencies, and once we receive nominations, a committee is set up. State Fire Marshal, Executive Director of the Washington Fire Commissioners, our Legislative Chair, President Brooks, and a Member-at-Large go through them and select an awardee for the year. And so for the year 2022, Chief Brian Schaefer was selected for this award from the Washington Fire Chiefs Association. So we're here tonight to present that, and I'll turn it over to President Brooks.
Again, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come and to recognize Chief Schaefer, and we received six nominations for this award this year, which is one of the largest in my tenure on the board. And while he was among very noble and deserving peers, it was also a unanimous vote that Chief Schaefer was unanimously elected. In the presentation and the nomination that was provided by Mayor Woodward, I thought after reading two pages of all the things that he's accomplished in his now 18 years here with the city, there was one line that really stood out to me that I thought was worthy to share with you tonight, and it says that "Chief Schaefer emulates Chief Packer's desire for constant improvement, strength in action, determination, and loyalty." Uniquely, Chief Schaefer and I came to our current roles at almost the same time within a couple of months of each other, and both had the opportunity to serve alongside and see Chief Packer in action and to count him as both a friend and a mentor. And I know that Chief Packer would also be very approving of tonight's presentation. So with that, we want to make the presentation. We have this beautiful perpetual monument, if you will. It's very sizable. Chief Wright looked great carrying it down the middle of downtown on the way here today, but we will leave this with you for the next year. It will stay here until next May, when the next nominee is awarded. And then we also have one that we want to present to Chief Schaefer that will stay with him for his desk. I'm going to do my best not to drop and break it because it is glass, but it says, "From the Washington Fire Chiefs, Chief Brian Schaefer, the 2023 Chief Dan Packer, Fire Chief of the Year." Thank you.
You know what? Congratulations, Brian. It's been an honor and a pleasure. And for everybody else, I know there's several of you that are coming up on the end of your tenure, as I am. So this is a capstone for me. This is...Dan Packer was a very, very good friend, so this means a lot to me. And it means a lot to me to have Spokane recognized because we are doing really good things here, and the work that we do saves lives. It means an incredible amount to me. It's the most profound mission that I could ever be a part of, and you make that a reality and you make that possible. So thank you very much.
All right, next, we have Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. Councilmember Cathcart and Jason Conley, are you here? Come on down.
Yeah, come on down. I'm happy to pinch-hit for Councilmember Bingle. He's here on Zoom, but he's dealing with a little bit of a sickness, so I will go ahead and read this on his behalf. City Spokane proclamation, "Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives designated July as Parks and Recreation Month in recognition of the importance of parks and recreation in contributing to the physical, economic, and environmental well-being of communities. And whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, including building healthy, active communities, providing therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improving the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Spokane's parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community by improving the quality of the air we breathe, providing vegetative buffers to development, and producing habitat for wildlife, as well as providing a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month in Spokane and invite all citizens to visit our many community parks and engage with our recreation resources all year long."
All right, we have a salutation. A lot of you are here today to celebrate the good work that so many people have accomplished in transforming Camp Hope into a different situation, in transitioning people into housing out of that. And so I'm going to read the salutation, and then I'm going to get to a point where I try to list as many organizations as possible, and when I get to that point, please stand up. We can't mention every person from every place, and at the very end, I have a catch-all. So if you're in the...find yourself in the catch-all, please stand up. And so I will just get started here. "Whereas in July 2021, City Council revised Municipal Code 1805 regarding human rights and protections for homeless people, improving the city's standards to help vulnerable and unhoused people during extreme environmental conditions, declaring an emergency and to have a plan in place by no later than September 30th of each year. And whereas in December 2021, individuals experiencing homelessness in Spokane set up camps along the Spokane River. And whereas those individuals, per city ordinance, were required to vacate those river-location camps and then move to the sidewalk outside of City Hall to stage a peaceful protest over the lack of shelter beds and compliance with the municipal code. And whereas those individuals were required to move again, resulting in the largest homeless encampment in Washington, which came to be known as Camp Hope. And whereas the State Department of Transportation attempted to engage and find constructive solutions to ensure public safety, health standards, secure shelter, and permanent housing. And whereas the mayor's office responded by extending hours at four libraries and provided free STA passes. And whereas the mayor's office further responded by stating that entrance into the five-year lease of a building at 4320 East Trent to act as a temporary low-barrier shelter for 150 to 250 beds would hopefully suffice as another place to go during extreme weather. And whereas community outreach providers and coordinators raised concern that the Trent Shelter would not accommodate all of the campers at Camp Hope. And whereas the Trent Shelter was not able to open until September of 2022. And whereas the number of houseless individuals at the time residing at Camp Hope grew to over 600 persons. And whereas a cooling shelter was rapidly constructed by volunteers during dangerously high temperatures with financial and person power supported from the state and community resources. And whereas in the months that ensued, a large group of community service providers and homeless outreach coordinators stepped up to come to the table, work with city administrators and elected officials, and have frank conversations to help the residents of Camp Hope and other residents of Spokane experiencing homelessness to find more permanent housing and the services needed to build a foundation to stay housed and provide a path to a healthier, sustainable life. And Camp Hope closed ahead of schedule on June 9, 2023. Now therefore I, Brian Beggs, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, hereby salute...this is where you can start standing, the Washington State Department of Transportation and Department of Commerce for providing extraordinary funding of millions of dollars in services to the City of Spokane, along with a coordinated plan to use a human-centered approach to evaluating the needs of each resident and matching them with customized resources. I also hereby salute the following organizations for coming to the table and not only engaging in complex conversations about helping people experiencing homelessness to find a path out, but also to ensure public safety to all the members of our impacted residential and business communities. Despite the continued pressure for a sweep enclosure, legal challenges, and a lack of infrastructure, these organizations persisted and are responsible for a truly historic Herculean and successful effort. The Washington State Department of Health, the Washington State Department of Licensing, Empire Health Foundation, Jules Helping Hands, Compassionate Addiction Treatment, the Homeless Coalition, Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington, Spokane Low Income Housing Consortium, Cup of Cool Water, Housing Navigators, Volunteers of America, Family Promise, the Salvation Army, Spokane Regional Health District, Revive Counseling Spokane, CHAZ Medical Street Outreach, Frontier Behavioral Health, the Smith Barbieri Progressive Fund, 12 Strategies, HousingandHelp.org, Corner Booth Media, Maury Smiths, and Rising River Media, and countless community volunteers and faith communities and employees, officials of Spokane. Anyone else who is supportive of these efforts, no matter where you came from and no matter what you believed, if you believed in helping move people forward, please stand, and I salute you. Brian Beggs, Spokane City Council Member and President. Thank you. And there's more work to do, so I'm glad you're ready to go. All right, we're switching gears now into the legislative agenda.
Wait.
Okay, we're not.
We have one more salutation and one more presentation.
Okay.
I'd like to invite Mr. Larry Crowder of Spokane International Airport up.
There's more behind the curtain.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the invitation to come up, Councilwoman Kinnear. I'm joined by our Board Chair Nancy Voorhees, our Board Vice Chair Jennifer West, and our Board Member Ezra Eckhart, and I believe our Board Chair would like to address council very briefly.
Thank you. And good evening, and thank you for allowing us to do this presentation. On behalf of the Spokane Airport Board, I would like to extend our sincere thanks to Council President Beggs for his service from January 2020 through July 2023. Council Beggs joined the airport board just as we had finished a record year of over 4.11 million total passengers and were planning for another record year of growth. The pandemic changed all of that temporarily. Council President Beggs joined with the rest of our board to support CEO Larry Crowder to reduce our costs and to reschedule elements of our capital program in response to a 53% decline in passenger activity, all the while keeping the airport's financial position strong and retaining financially self-sufficient without the need for city or county financial support. During Council President Beggs' service to the airport board, more than $155 million in grants were secured by the airport. Council Beggs proved to be very helpful and strategic and a strategic thinker who came to the board meetings and always put his airport hat on and did what was in the best interest of the organization. Thank you. Thanks to his stewardship and team approach to working as a member of the airport board, we are emerging stronger than ever and expect a record year of growth as our airport continues to increase their momentum as economic engines for our community. Council President Beggs now joins a list of prior council presidents whom have served effectively on the airport board, and we are deeply appreciative of his dedication and commitment to supporting the airport CEO and staff, as well as his fellow airport board members. We have a small appreciation of a token of appreciation for you, Council President Beggs, if you would come and join us, please.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Council President, if you'd just stay there for a minute, please. What? I'm not going to scare him. Okay, just...we're going to read a salutation, and I will present it to you down there, but here we go. Saluting the public service of Council President Brian Beggs, whereas Brian Beggs has represented the community members of Spokane since 2016, first as a representative of District 2, then a city council president. And whereas he has devoted his time on council to affecting change by strengthening the Office of Police Ombudsman, sponsoring the Spokane's Fair Chance Hiring Ordinance, co-leading the city's response to COVID-19, and the distribution of ARPA funding, codifying community court, adopting an office land acknowledgement, and creating community-led subcommittees whose work has helped enact an updated sustainability action plan, improve residential rental policies, and include a wider variety of choices in council's work. And whereas Brian Beggs is well-known for being willing to compromise in order to find consensus when disagreements or difficult issues arise. Whereas Brian Beggs has led the council steadfastly striving to create equal opportunities... Whereas Brian Beggs has led the council steadfastly striving to create equal opportunities for all community members to participate in the governmental process and working toward his vision of making Spokane a city where we all belong. Now, therefore, I, Lori Kinnear, Spokane City Council President, pro tem, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, hereby salute Brian Beggs for their service to the city of Spokane.
I have a few words for the end of the meeting, but I wanted to say particularly to my friends on this dais. And Jonathan, I have learned so much from all of you. And the truth is that I don't know that people understand, who aren't in this group, how much we love this city and every person who lives in it, no matter who they are, no matter where they come from, no matter where their status is. And we often disagree on the very specific solution, but we all agree that together we're stronger. And the respect that we have developed amongst each other and the relationship has been a tribute to all of us and has served us well despite the buffeting storms of the world and really some of the comments out there on the internet that make things even harder. But you all have hearts of gold and are committed to this city, and it has been my great privilege and honor to serve with all of you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. As I was saying, we have different rules for the legislative section. We don't do clapping or cheering or booing. And we will have open forum here in a moment, and the rules on open forum is you have up to two minutes to speak on anything related to city business. Please don't reference personal litigation that you might be involved in, and it can't be anything that's on tonight's agenda or next week's agenda. For regular commentary on the consent agenda or the other issues, the rules are the same, but in addition, but you have three minutes to testify. I'll ask people to come up in groups of three so that we can, and I'll keep refreshing that, so people can sit in the front, and then you just have a couple steps to go to the podium. Please address your comments to the meeting chair, which is me at this time. Please don't degrade or denigrate anyone personally. Please don't use any vulgar language. You can wear hats, buttons, and T-shirts, but we don't allow waving of display signs. And we ask you to keep your voice in a normal tone and not pound on the podium. I also ask that if you're in the audience, even though you might be tempted to talk to your neighbor, please go out to the Chase Gallery. The speakers are out there, so you can hear things, but it becomes distracting for people. And please remember that everybody here has the right to express their opinion, and please treat them as you would like to be treated as well. And with that, for open forum, the first person I see is Sunshine Wigan, and then Dennis Flynn, and then Megra Flatman. So come on down, Sunshine. And Megra is going to be by phone.
I had to put on my party glasses for you.
Okay.
Okay. So, at the conference today, or the other day.
Can you grab that mic, Sunshine, a little closer?
Sunshine Wigan from Spokane yelling, sorry, that was really loud. Two rights being taken away in the Houston model are right to access the change, the changes needed in taxes if it's an entity, and the assessment of taxes and fees. If you are trying to understand the basic legal structure of a corporation, I suggest looking up Michael Moore's The Corporation. It'll show you how it plays out in the courts. Also, if you want to understand the tactic of the sales pitch that they are using to sell this, you can look up The Mysteries Ministry of the Snakes by Bishop TJ Wells, or T, sorry, TD Wells. If, it was used in Roman Christian and Wiccan religion. It's just kind of looking past the brass snake that Moses put up and that God put more than one snake down there, and it's important to look at all, the whole picture, not just what's promising life. In that conference, while he was answering questions, he did admit that this is a dangerous move because it is a very dangerous legal move. And I'm not saying it's good, it's bad, I'm just trying to educate, but it is a legal move, and I think it's really important to remember that. So my elders, or the elders of the homeless community, kept the money in separate pots because that way they could have three safety nets of legal protection around them. And also, they strongly believed in not treating it like an industry. So I'm for collaboration, and corporation entity, I don't know how to feel about that.
Sunshine.
Thank you.
We're at the end of your time. Thanks so much for coming down. Dennis Flynn, and after Dennis is Megra by phone, and then Will Huelings. Welcome.
Thank you, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Just out of decorum, I'm going to modify what I was going to say a little bit. There was much vitriol hurled at you, City Council, last meeting, about decisions that you're making, and as you said, you're doing it out of thoughts for the better of the community. There was a lot of talk about more programs, more treatment, more after-hours activities, more, 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 tis, 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 shame, shame, shame. What I would say to every citizen who points at the council for the answers is I would repeat, what I was going to start this out with was the word "you." You, fellow citizen, are the person we've been waiting for. You, who sees the problem so well, you are the unique and advantageous perspective we need to engage the needed change. You can organize these programs. You can reach the peoples where they are to put in place the solutions they need. Thank you to those who are working at something to make their community better. For everyone else, go do something, either instead of, or in addition to, spinning your wheels here. I know it seems hard, I know it might seem scary to try, I know assuming responsibility might seem out of reach, but you can do it. It's time to stop waiting for the council to fix the problems that you can see so well. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Megra Flatman, if you'd like to hit star three. Will Huelings. After Will is Michael McGuire, and then Sheri Barnett, if you guys want to make your way up to the front.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings. Live downtown Spokane. Tonight, I just want to mention, something's kind of bothered me for a whole month of June. There is a big rainbow flag. I don't care what people say. But when I heard that the city, because some traffic calming, that there's going to be, not only that right there, but there's a crosswalk up on Perry, five other crosswalks, they're going to be painted rainbows. Why? I'm trying to figure that out with the sidewalk. I could, I live downtown. If I'm not watching where I'm walking, I'm going to trip and hurt myself riding my bicycle. If I don't watch out, I ride through a pothole. So couldn't you have taken some of that money and maybe put it towards that? How about also, I call crime check. I get put on hold for 15 minutes, I call back, and then I'm ballistic, and I tell them I want to speak to a supervisor. Well, because they put me on holds because they don't have enough staff, just like our SPD, they don't have enough staff. So, please, I mean, I don't, like, I tried to read through 700, this big PDF, to prepare to come and speak today, see that? Yeah, I do prepare. But there's so much to read through, and if I don't, if you don't read and pay attention, I mean, you guys just slip stuff through like that traffic calming rainbow sidewalk stuff, so thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Will. Michael McGuire, I saw Michael earlier, he is. Come on down, Michael. And then after Michael is Sheri, and then Tanya.
Congratulations, President Beggs, on your new position.
Thank you.
Members of the Spokane City Council, Mike McGuire, Spokane, Washington. The statue of John Robert Monahan, Ensign, U.S. Navy, should not be removed. Born in Chewailla, Washington, in 1875, John Monahan graduated from Annapolis Academy in 1876. On April 1st, 1899, John Monahan was killed in Samoia, defending his friend Lieutenant Lansdery, who had been wounded. Ensign Monahan could have fled, yet he stayed with his friend. Later, John Monahan was killed. Courage is easy to say, yet difficult to do. John Kennedy proved courage by saying, by helping his crew on PT-109. The men at Normandy showed courage by Normandy invasion against the Germans. So please keep the statue of John Monahan, and let's have the courage to forgive, as I believe Ensign Monahan would have done. So rest in peace, and God bless. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, Michael. Sheri Barnett, and then Tanya Comstock. Welcome, Sheri.
Thank you. I'm Sheri Barnett, and I live in Spokane. And I've mentioned this many times, but America is great because America was made to be good. And we're on the cutting edge of not being good. It's a very precipice time. I think of God rules. He lifts nations up and he puts them down. I think of that wonderful song, "This land is your land, this land is my land," from California to the New York Highlands, from the Redwood Forest to the, I can't remember the rest of it right now. But I love it. I love this nation, I love the peoples of it. But we are, I know I'm on my step on toes, but abortion is something God hates, and those little people should not be destroyed. And this land, God bless you all.
Thanks for coming down, Sheri. Tanya Comstock.
Congratulations, Beggs.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right now, when I go out to places, you know, there's some parents that are like rude to their kids, you know, like on the buses and stuff, and down at the Plaza. And I think that people need help raising kids to that, or by themselves, you know, and if they can't control them, you know, there should be two parents with them too. You know, and some of them are not teaching them anything too, because they're letting their kids drop out of schools, you know, too early. And they shouldn't be doing that too. And they should, they teach them what the world's going to be like after they graduate, and teach them about having jobs, and so, and they need to teach them about families too, you know. There's a lot of things that gives me to learn these days too.
Thanks for coming down, Tanya. We're going to try Megra again, we had a problem with WebEx, if you want to hit star three. All right, Megra, welcome to City Council, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. Seventy-one percent of people sitting in Spokane County Jail right now have not been found guilty, but they are awaiting trial for nonviolent crimes. Seventy-one percent, most of the people. The JFA Institute, who Spokane County paid to analyze our overcrowded jail statistics, concluded that not only are most of the people sitting in jail not serving a sentence, but they aren't even being charged with violent crimes. Eighty-nine percent of the people sitting in Spokane County Jail are booked on misdemeanors or nonviolent felonies. Jamie Hawk, who is a former Gonzaga law professor, describes this system as the, quote, "pipeline to mass incarceration." When the people who are poor enough to require public defenders, when the people who are criminalized for sleeping in the parks, when the people who have no shelters to go are booked with prohibitively high bonds for nonviolent crimes and misdemeanors, this creates a jail system. Spokane County paid JFA Institute, paid JFA Institute for these findings, and JFA Vice President Wendy Ware told The Inlander that Spokane County Jail is an outlier compared to other jails, both for the absurd length of stay for nonviolent crimes, as well as for the month-long incarceration for drug possession cases. But absurdly long detention is not the only exploitative practice shown by the Spokane County Jail demographic. Black people and people of color are jailed at increasingly high rates compared to their white counterparts. Black people are jailed 13 times the rate of their white counterparts for the same crimes. Not only are they more likely to be kept in jail for similar charges, but they also spend twice as long in jail for those same offenses, an average of 27 days in jail waiting to get out, while white inmates were only incarcerated for 15 days. In 2020, the global COVID pandemic decreased the size of--
Megra.
Yeah.
We're at the end of your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next three people are Eugene Knowles, Catherine Quirk, and Anton Valone. Also, I just wanted to announce, there was, we were originally going to consider a ballot initiative to change the Charter on Redistricting that Council Member Cathcart proposed, but we, after the forms were put on, we deferred that until, two weeks? The 24th. So if you signed up for that, we're not going to be talking about that. And that is, just to be clear, special considerations S1A and B. So if you'd signed up for that, don't expect to be talking about that later tonight.
Did you want to talk about the other things we deferred as well?
I think that was the only thing that we deferred after we did the signup.
Yeah, some people had signed up for that because the form was already open.
Yep. All right, Eugene, come on up.
Okay, Eugene Knowles, I'd like to, everyone's been saying, or not everyone, a lot of people have been saying, "Your honor to you." I'd like to say, "Your excellency," because you've been, have done an excellent job. The three points I wanted to bring out is, number one, the, a couple of weeks ago, they had the consolidation plan over at the Spokane Convention Center, and I was kind of wowed by all the firepower that is here in Spokane to get things done. The problem is, from my perspective, Spokane is about 10 years, maybe 20 years behind in getting its basic-- getting its basic shelter in place. And all the things they said there, you can also read in House of Charities 2.0, fantastic plan, but when you're at the plan stage, you got blueprints, you got agencies to approve it, then you gotta build it. So, you're talking five years out if people are in a hurry. Part two, the product we're looking for here is the facility. The track shelter is the, for Hope, what's it, Camp Hope, with a roof on it. Nothing has changed, except there's a roof over the same people who are living outside. It's unacceptable. Final point here is, who we're trying to serve here are two groups of people. Number one, about 2,000 of the residents, about 1% of the city, the people who are homeless. The other 200,000 people are the people who are looking and saying, "Why are all these people in the street?" From my view, we're doing a better job serving the 200,000 who are wondering how come these people are in the street--
Eugene.
--rather than the people who are homeless.
Thanks for coming down. Catherine, welcome.
Oh, yeah.
After Catherine is Anton, and then Justin Haller.
Let me get this here. Okay, my name is Catherine Corrick. I am a community volunteer, a licensed mental health counselor, and I have many years' experience in a variety of different social programs, including the last 20 years in a co-occurring setting. So, I have a few brief remarks about the proposed regional homeless authority, which was expanded on, expanded to include a legal structure to address not only homelessness, but also housing, which would include zoning, as well as healthcare and safety, presumably public safety. This was at the meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago. At the Homeless Coalition meeting this Thursday, Gavin Cooley, who spearheaded getting this group together, referred to the fact that pushback is already beginning on this expanded concept. I think the regional authorities' inclusion of all the above-mentioned aspects has it right, because it is integrative, holistic, and addresses all the elements needed to resolve homelessness in a meaningful way, once and for all. Spokane has the 10th-largest unhoused population per capita in the country. We cannot afford half measures at this critical point. The recommendations are now in the hands of the elected officials, including you guys here on the council, as well as the county officials of the Spokane Valley, along with other smaller entities. How a republic input is still welcome to all of you guys, all of you elected people, as well as to SpokaneUnite.org, per Mr. Cooley, one of the drafters.
Catherine, we're at the end of your time for today.
This will just take a second.
Well--
Please.
Yep.
Spokane needs and deserves everyone's best thinking.
Catherine, I have to treat everyone the same, so, thanks--
Okay, all right.
--for coming down.
Thank you.
All right, Anton, and then Justin Haller, and then Greg Abel.
Hi, everybody. My name is Anton Valone, and congratulations for your next position.
Thank you.
Okay? I want to say something about affirmative action, you know, that was overturned by the United States Supreme Court. Okay? Affirmative action, at the time of introduction, was deemed necessary for individuals of color. Affirmative action really has nothing at all to do with intelligence or the mental state of the individual's race and origin. Anyone with honesty and integrity knows why, the reason affirmative action was enacted. It appears after 60 to 70 years that it has everything to do with the mental state and intelligence when it has nothing at all to do with but pure hate of skin color, like the people that were hung in Mississippi. It has nothing to do with, the way they said that it's because people of color are more like subhuman, they're not superior, and the way that it is put, I think that that's an insult. Anybody with integrity knows that. I just want to point that out, because when it was passed, it was because of hate. People of color were not safe in the South. It's not because they want to pass them in, put them at the higher education, because they want to give them a break. That's how corrupt this system is, you know, that we can understand, and I hope we can work through it. I just want to point that out, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Justin, and after Justin is Greg Abel, and then Teresa Simon. Welcome.
My name's Justin Haller. My pronouns are Ron Swanson, because I believe in accountability for the money you guys steal, I mean, take. Why don't we have true freedom of speech? We have rules for thee, not for you. We have clapping for one thing, but no clapping for another thing. So, if it was really about sensitive people and people who need cry closets, then no clapping, no clapping at all, no cheering, no jeering. But we don't have freedom of speech. I'm glad your reign of terror is finally ending, and God help anyone who goes to Superior Court, because that would be a disaster, because you haven't been impartial and fair at all during your whole tenure, and you won't as a judge. It's scary. As always, I've sent many of you emails with little to no response, so if you check your inbox, you might see some emails, and I'd like responses. Otherwise, if you actually responded, I wouldn't have to come here in person. Do you have any metric or proof for the money that was stolen through the NGO that was filtered to a nonprofit called Jewel Stealing Hands? Where's the money? I want to see metrics for how many people were housed, and why they felt the need to buy copious amounts of cases of beer. What about the rain gutters? What's going on with the seldom-traveled staircase that has rain gutters on it now? Who thought up that genius project? And what's going on with the rainbow flags? I don't care that they're rainbow flags. I care that they were budgeted for $50,000, and the lowest bid was $5,000, and they ended up costing $10,000. So, where'd the extra money go? And last but not least, and you could have fixed potholes for that instead, which would benefit everyone versus the 2.5% of the population. Also, we still don't want fluoride in the water--
Justin, we're at the end of your time for tonight.
Still don't want fluoride in the water, but you guys bypassed us--
Thanks for coming down.
--and also send me a bird for governor.
Thanks for coming down. Greg Abel, and after Greg is Teresa Simon.
Thank you. My name is Greg Abel. I live in Spokane County. I'm a landlord in Spokane City. I have a 14-unit apartment, and the reason that I'm here today is because I have a tenant that is two and a half months behind on rent, and I want to proceed with an eviction, but because there's this law, SMC 18.08, that prohibits the issuance of a pay or vacate notice unless the ERPP is operational and accepting new referrals. So, you know, there's obviously a problem there, and I'd like to see, you know, a workaround somehow, either repealing of the law, or some kind of workaround, so that, you know, we can get back to normal after, you know, we've been having these eviction problems since the beginning of COVID. Thank you.
Greg, thanks for coming down, and just, we don't usually respond to people, but we can give extra information, and we have a draft that will update the law to match that. So, that's in process, but thanks for coming down. Teresa.
I have a page called Spokane County Court Corruption. Spokane County Court Corruption. I also have a YouTube and a Facebook page. I'm not tolerant of corruption in the courthouse, and I believe that they're trafficking minor children for the benefit of creating law. I would also like to say I'm very encouraged to have you become a judge. I'm actually excited, because I believe you know the law, you know civil law, you know how to look up law, and you will follow law, and you don't have to call somebody else to explain it to you. So, with that said, you should actually be honored that I've had a page for four years, and I'm actually telling you I have a lot of faith in you. Congratulations. I'm excited for you. I'm excited for the community, totally. Now, next subject. We were engineered for two arrows for crosswalk signs at Thor and Hartson. They pointed them into the neighbor's yard and not into the crosswalk with 30,000 cars on my street per lane, per day, and I want that corrected, and I'm not going away. And I do love you, Betsy, and you can put a big sign in my yard, because I think you're awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for coming--
And--
Okay, keep going.
I love you guys, and I'll be back.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Teresa. All right, we're gonna move to our consent agenda, and I'll have Ms. Fister read that. We have three people signed up to speak on that, Dennis Flynn, Teresa Simon, and Maigra Flatman.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Item number one is deferred to January 29, 2024 agenda, excuse me, July, or yes, January 29, 2024 agenda, sorry. Number two, five-year value blanket with HASA Incorporated, Saugus, California, to supply sodium hypochlorite on an as-needed basis to the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility from August 1, 2023 to July 31, 2028, $1,850,820. Number three, public works agreement with McKinnon Street Company, LLC. Spokane for HVAC repairs at the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility from June 1, 2023 to May 31, 2024, $164,335 plus tax applicable. Number four, preapproval to purchase four to five used vehicles to be used by the police department to fill in the gap due to long lead times waiting for the new K8 police interceptors not to exceed $160,000. Number five, acceptance of fiscal year 2022 Continuum of Care Program awards from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and approval to enter into sub-recipient agreements with the awarded grantees, $4,359,643. Number six, recommendation to list the Alex and Fanny Ritter House, 702 West 21st Avenue on the Spokane Register of Historic Places. Number seven, low bid of Power City Electric Incorporated Spokane for the Division Pedestrian Hybrid Beacons Project, $1,185,725.13. Administrative reserve of $118,572.51, which is 10% of the contract, will be set aside. Number eight, low bid of DW Excavating Incorporated, Davenport, Washington, for the Northeast Force Main Project, $1,190,792 plus tax. An administrative reserve of $119,079.20 plus tax, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Number nine, low bid of Home Make Construction Incorporated Spokane for the South Gorge Trail Connection Project, $2,529,036. An administrative reserve of $252,903.60, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside, Peaceful Valley Riverside Neighborhoods. Number 10, low bid of WM Winkler Company Spokane for the Garland Avenue Pathway Shaw Middle School Project, $1,321,359.25. An administrative reserve of $132,135.93, which is 10% of the contract, will be set aside, North Hill Neighborhood. Number 11, public works contract with Clearwater Summit Group Spokane for the site preparation, installation of a new irrigation system, and new landscaping and initial maintenance of such at the Indian Trail Water Tower, $82,825.72, $75,296.11 plus 10% administrative reserve. Number 12, report of the mayor pending A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through June 23, 2023. Total $5,285,759.47 with Parks and Library claims approved with respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $4,050,47.63. B, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through June 30, 2023. Total $12,383,648.5 with Parks and Library claims approved with respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $11,881,472.89. C, pay for claims of previously approved obligations through June 24, 2023. Number 13, city council meeting minutes for June 12, June 26, June 29, and July 6, 2023.
Thank you, as always, for your amazing reading, and apparently, we have some opportunities for more of that tonight. So, Dennis Flynn, you've got up to three minutes.
Hopefully, I won't take that. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Just as with the recent presentation about planning for a road and bridge repair, this continuum of care program is an example of one of the most impactful aspects of systemic oppression in our modern society, government money with strings. Anyone who digs into the funding for this program will see that the same rot that is at the core of the road and bridge repair exists in this program, which is that the majority of the money comes from the federal government, but it comes with strings. I guess because all of us local yokels are just rubes who can't be trusted to make the right decisions for our locality. So, if you want the money, you must adhere to the dictat. Case in point, even though our city has to put up 25% additional to the award, all of the tax dollars and the COC award must adhere to the housing-first approach. This means that over 1.1 million of our city tax dollars spent on homelessness must not have any barriers nor any requirements to attend treatment programs. Whether or not this has worked well in other communities, all anyone, I don't know, but all anyone needs to do is look around Third and Division to see the examples of how it works here. And another requirement is that our city's entire homelessness response system, including shelters, must also follow the housing first as a core tenet. Get that? That means that even the stuff that we fund ourselves that isn't blessed with matching federal funds must still adhere to the holy dictat written down and spread among us as the gospel of the hood. What's that called when the government works hand in our pockets with organizations specifically selected to meet their Orwellian dictat gospel? Oh, yeah, fascism. Another interesting tidbit gleaned from looking at the details, that Catholic charities are earmarked for about 1.4 million to those funds, or approximately one-third of the total COC award. Sure makes it easy to understand why that organization would put up initial monies donated by fellow Catholics such as myself if it can be made to rein annual award money. When you take the local community's skin out of the game, where instead of being our brother's keeper by tending to his needs, when instead, our only job is to pay taxes and the government will take care of it, well, that's how you end up with the results we get and lose the saving grace of performing charitable works. It's a lose-lose, and a costly one at that. Regarding the pedestrian hybrid beacons, I think that was on the consent agenda. It's one thing when there's a five blocks, six blocks in between signals in which to cross the street, but when there's one block away to the next signal, such as the on-demand put-in at GU on Hamilton and the others on Division, it's a complete waste of taxpayer funding. Not only the initial cost to install, but the ongoing maintenance and future replacement as well. If GU thinks it's too hard on their students to walk an extra two blocks, one up and one down, then have them submit a permit for and fund a pedestrian bridge. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Maigra Flatman, if you'd like to dial star three. All right, welcome, Maigra. You have up to three minutes.
Keeping people sheltered is not fascist. Having people have access to someplace to go that isn't 90 degrees or heat-stroke potential weather, having someplace to go that isn't neg 20 degrees, like we hit last winter, hypothermic, frostbite weather, that's not fascist. Keeping our fellow Spokaneites sheltered and having options to break out of the cycle of mental addiction in order to have compassionate addiction treatment care, that's the opposite of fascism. Having money go and getting money from our federal government to help us with this mental health crisis and with this humanitarian crisis, helping people be the best people that they can be, isn't fascist. This is loving one another, and this is helping one another, and this is community. This is putting together a world where no one has to sleep on the streets. This is putting together a world where nobody dies from exposure. Over 200 Spokaneites died on the streets in the year 2021 to 2022. Having a space available that's safe, where they won't die like that, is very important. And while the cost breakdown does-- And while the cost breakdown does look a little interesting, having those places is really important and really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Simon, let's see you there. Then we'll vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is passed. That gets us to special budget ordinances, and we agreed earlier today, or I announced earlier today without objection, that we would take testimony for all of those at once. But Ms. Fister is, I think, one of them is a title, and then the rest of them she has to read since they were filed such a short time ago, so.
Did you want me to read them all together or one by one?
No, you can read them all together.
Okay. Ordinances, amending ordinance number C 36345, passed by the City Council December 12, 2022, and entitled in ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city, Spokane, for 2023, making appropriations to various funds of the city as Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency and appropriating funds in ordinance C 36406. Various funds to make grade and associated pay range changes for various positions as more specifically described in the ordinance. This action arises from the need to adjust pay ranges to align with salary analysis. I'll read the rest of the ordinances in full, except for ordinance C 36412, which is deferred to July 24, 2023 agenda. Ordinance C 36409, and ordinance amending ordinance number C 36345, passed by the City Council December 12, 2022, and entitled, and ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city, Spokane, for 2023, making appropriations to various funds of the city as Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency. Whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2023 Budget Ordinance, number C 36345, as above entitled, in which passed the City Council December 12, 2022, it is necessary to make changes in the appropriations of the General Fund, Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund, Criminal Justice Assistance Fund, and the Public Safety Personnel and Crime Reduction Fund, which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time in making such budget ordinance. And whereas this ordinance has been on file in the City Clerk's Office for five days now, therefore, the city of Spokane does ordain Section 1, that in the budget of the Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase appropriation by $144,000. A of the increased appropriation, $144,000, is provided solely as an operating transfer out to the General Fund Police Department. B, this is a $144,000 increase to the overall appropriation level in the Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund. Section 2, then in the budget of the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, decrease appropriation by $4,600,000. A of the decreased appropriation, $4,600,000, is removed solely from contractual services in the Human Services Program. Number two, increase appropriation by $4,600,000. A of the increased appropriation, $4,600,000, is provided solely as an operating transfer out to the General Fund Police Department from the Criminal Justice Assistance Program. B, this is not an increase to the overall appropriation level in the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund. Section 3, then in the budget of the Public Safety Personnel and Crime Reduction Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, decrease appropriation by $22,700. A of the decreased appropriation, $22,700, is removed solely from reserved for budget adjustment in the Community Justice Services Programs. Number two, increase appropriation by $2,872,700. A of the increased appropriation, $22,700, is provided solely as an operating transfer out to the General Fund Community Justice Services Department from the Community Justice Services Programs. B of the increased appropriation, $2,850,000, is provided solely as an operating transfer out to the General Fund Police Department. C, this is a $2,850,000 increase to the overall appropriation level in the Public Safety Personnel and Crime Reduction Fund. Section 4, then in the budget of the General Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase revenue by $8,801,700. A of the increased revenue, $636,000, is provided solely for military department revenue in the non-departmental department. B of the increased revenue, $12,000, is provided solely for non-business licenses permits in the Police Department. C of the increased revenue, $30,000, is provided solely for the Criminal Justice Special Program and the Police Department. D of the increased revenue, $485,000, is provided solely for law enforcement services in the Police Department. E of the increased revenue, $22,000, is provided solely for other general miscellaneous revenue in the Police Department. F of the increased revenue, $144,000, is provided solely to an operating transfer in from the Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund to the Police Department. G of the increased revenue, $4,600,000, is provided solely for an operating transfer in from the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund at the Police Department. H of the increased revenue, $2,872,700, provided solely for an operating transfer in from the Public Safety Personnel and Crime Reduction Fund to the Police Department. Number two, decrease appropriation by $315,000. A of the decreased appropriation, $315,000, is removed solely from reserved for service advancement in the Police Department. Three, increase appropriation by $9,189,318. A of the increased appropriation, $900,000, is provided solely for education pay in the Police Department. B of the increased appropriation, $261,532, is provided solely for the base wages in the Police Department. C of the increased appropriation, $76,990, provided solely for the temp wages in the Police Department. D of the increased appropriation, $3,65,199, is provided solely for uniform overtime in the Police Department. E of the increased appropriation, $856,450, is provided solely for overtime in the Police Department. F of the increased appropriation, $263,300, is provided solely for extrajuting in the Police Department. G of the increased appropriation, $833,507, is provided solely for standby pay in the Police Department. H of the increased appropriation, $445,208, is provided solely for the annual leave payout in the Police Department. I of the increased appropriation, $420,000, is provided solely for VIBA medical savings in the Police Department. J of the increased appropriation, $1,603,432, is provided solely for social security in the Police Department. K of the increased appropriation, $265,000, is provided solely for contractual services in the Economic Development Department. L of the increased appropriation, $22,700, is provided solely for base wages in the Community Justice Services Department. M of the increased appropriation, $26,000, provided solely for base wages in the Municipal Court Department. N of the increased appropriation, $150,000, is provided solely for tolling expense in the Police Department. Oh, this is a $8,874,318 increase in the overall appropriation level in the General Fund. Section 5, it is therefore by the City Council declared that an urgency and emergency exists for making the changes set forth herein. Such urgency and emergency arising from the need to adjust the General Fund budget, and because of such need, an urgency and emergency exists for the passage of this ordinance, and also because of the same makes an appropriation, it shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage. Ordinance C 36410, and ordinance amending ordinance number C 36345, passed by the City Council December 12, 2022, and entitled, in ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city, Spokane, for 2023, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency. Whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2023 Budget Ordinance, number C 36345, as above entitled, in which passed the City Council December 12, 2022, it is necessary to make the changes in the appropriations of various funds, which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time in making such budget ordinance. And whereas this ordinance has been on file in the City Clerk's Office for five days now, therefore, the city of Spokane does ordain. Section 1, then in the budget of the General Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $91,125. A of the increased appropriation, $91,125, is provided solely for Washington-paid family medical leave, PFML premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the General Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 2, then in the budget of the Street Maintenance Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $4,275. A of the increased appropriation, $4,275, is provided solely for Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Street Maintenance Fund unappropriated balance. Section 3, then in the budget of the Code Enforcement Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $957. A of the increased appropriation, $957, provided solely for Washington-paid family medical paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Code Enforcement Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 4, then in the budget of the Library Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $3,155. A of the increased appropriation, $3,155, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Library's Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 5, then in the budget of the Traffic Calming Measures Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $1,222. A of the increased appropriation, $1,222, is provided solely for Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Traffic Calming Measures Fund unappropriated fund balance. Section 6, then in the budget of the Parks and Recreation Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $4,271. A of the increased appropriation, $4,271, provided solely for Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Parks and Recreation Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 7, then in the budget of the Park and Media Revenue Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $677. A of the increased appropriation, $677, is provided solely for Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Park and Media Revenue Fund's unappropriated funds balance. Section 8, then in the budget of the Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $882. A of the increased appropriation, $882, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund's fund balance. Section 9, then in the budget of the Public Safety Levy Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $4,823. A of the increased appropriation, $4,823, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Public Safety Levy Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 10, then in the budget of the Community Housing and Human Services Fund and the budget annex thereto, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $938. A of the increased appropriation, $938, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Community Housing and Human Services Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 11, then in the budget of the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $31. A of the increased appropriation, $31, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund unappropriated fund balance. Section 12, then in the budget of the Fire Emergency Medical Services Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $21,030. A of the increased appropriation, $21,030, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Fire Emergency Medical Services Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 13, then in the budget of the Water Division Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $7,277. A of the increased appropriation, $7,277, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Water Division Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 14, then in the budget of the Integrated Capital Management Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $874. A of the increased appropriation, $874, is provided solely for Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Integrated Capital Management Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 15, then in the budget of the Sewer Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $9,277. A of the increased appropriation, $9,277, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Sewer Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 16, then in the budget of the Solid Waste Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $8,502. A of the increased appropriation, $8,502, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Solid Waste Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 17, then in the budget of the Gulf Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to that fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $514. A of the increased appropriation, $514, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Gulf Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 18, then in the budget of the Development Services Center Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $2,870. A of the increased appropriation, $2,870, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Development Services Center Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 19, then in the budget of the Fleet Services Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $1,702. A of the increased appropriation, $1,702, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Fleet Services Fund and Unappropriated Fund. Section 20, then in the budget of the Public Works and Utilities Fund and the budget annex thereto, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $746. A of the increased appropriation, $746, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Public Works and Utilities Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 21, then in the budget of the Innovation Technology Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $3,000. A of the increased appropriation, $3,000, is provided solely for Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the IT Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 22, then in the budget of the Reprographics Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $138. A of the increased appropriation, $138, provided solely for the Washington family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Reprographics Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 23, then in the budget of the Purchasing and Stores Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $502. A of the increased appropriation, $502, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Purchasing and Stores Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 24, then in the budget of the Accounting Services Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $1,910. A of the increased appropriation, $1,910, is provided solely for Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Accounting Services Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 25, then in the budget of the My Spokane Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $536. A of the increased appropriation, $536, is provided solely for the Washington family paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the My Spokane Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 26, then in the budget of the Office of Performance Management Fund and the budget annex thereto with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase the appropriation by $430. A of the increased appropriation, $430, is provided solely for the Washington-paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Office of the Performance Management Fund's unappropriated fund balance. Section 27, then in the budget of the Risk Management Fund and the budget annex thereto[1619.03] annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase the appropriation by $49. A of the increased appropriation, $49 is provided solely for Washington paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Risk Management Funds and appropriated fund balance. Section twenty-eight, that in the budget of the Workers' Compensation Fund in the budget annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase the appropriation by $283. A of the increased appropriation, $283 is provided solely for the Washington paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Workers' Compensation Funds and appropriated fund balance. Section twenty-nine, then in the budget of the Unemployment Compensation Fund in the budget annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase the appropriation by $6. A of the increased appropriation, $6 is provided solely for the Washington paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Unemployment Compensation Funds fund balance. Section thirty, then in the budget of Employee Benefits Fund in the budget annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase the appropriation by $163. A of the increased appropriation, $163 is provided solely for Washington paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Employee Benefits Fund and appropriated fund balance. Section thirty-one, then in the budget of the Facilities Operating Fund in the budget annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase the appropriation by $688. A of the increased appropriation, $688 is provided solely for the Washington paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Facilities Operating Funds and appropriated fund balance. Section thirty-two, then in the budget of the Retirement Fund in the budget annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Increase the appropriation by $186. A of the increased appropriation, $186 is provided solely for the Washington paid family medical leave premiums. B, the increased appropriation is funded by the Retirement Funds and appropriated fund balance. Section thirty-three, it is therefore by the City Council declare that an urgency and emergency exists for making changes set forth here in such urgency and emergency arising from the need to increase citywide PFML budgets for 2023 premium rates because of such need and urgency and emergency exists for the passage of this ordinance and also because the same makes an appropriation that shall take effect and be enforced upon its passage. Ordinance number C-36411, an ordinance amending ordinance number C-36345 passed by the City Council December 12, 2022, and entitled, an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2023, make appropriations in the various funds of the city of Spokane government for fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passing declared an emergency whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2023 budget ordinance number C-36345 and above entitled in which passes the City Council December 12, 2022, it is necessary to make changes in the appropriations of the Real Estate Excise Tax Fund and the City Street Fund which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time in making such budget ordinance whereas the ordinance has been on file in the city clerk's office for five days now therefore the city of Spokane does our day in section one, then in the budget of the Real Estate Excise Tax Fund in the budget annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, decrease appropriation by $1,100,000. A of the decreased appropriation, $1,100,000 is removed solely from interfund other professional services in the Real Estate Excise Tax First Quarter Percent Department. Number two, increase appropriation by $1,100,000. A of the increased appropriation, $1,100,000 is provided solely for operating transfer out in the Real Estate Excise Tax Quarter Percent Department. Section two, then in the budget of the City Street Fund in the budget annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase revenue by $4 million. A of the increased revenue, $2,900,000 is provided solely for operating transfer in from the Real Estate Excise Tax Fund and the Real Estate Excise Tax First Quarter Percent Department. B, the increased revenue, $1,100,000 is provided solely for operating transfer in from the Real Estate Excise Tax Fund and the Real Estate Excise Tax Second Quarter Percent Department. Section three, it is therefore by the City Council declare that an urgency and emergency exists for making the changes set forth here in such urgency and emergency arising from the need to add omitted revenue budget authority and because of such need and urgency and emergency exists for the passage of this ordinance and also because the same makes an appropriation that shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage. And the last ordinance, ordinance number C-36413, an ordinance amending ordinance number C-36345 passed by the City Council December 12, 2022, and entitled, an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2023, make appropriations of various funds of the city of Spokane government for the year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passing declared an emergency whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2023 budget ordinance number C-36345 as above entitled in which passes the City Council December 12, 2022, it is necessary to make changes in the appropriations of the Asset Management Fund which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time in making such budget ordinance and whereas this ordinance has been on file in the city clerk's office for five days now therefore the city of Spokane does our day in section one, that in the budget of the Asset Management Fund in the budget annex there, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, decrease appropriation by $800,000. A of the decreased appropriation, $800,000 is removed solely from reserved for budget adjustment in the Capital Facilities Department. Section two, it is therefore by the City Council declare that an urgency and emergency exists for making the changes set forth here in such urgency and emergency arising from the need to remove duplicate budget authority and because of such need and urgency and emergency and exists for the passage of this ordinance and also because the same makes an appropriation that shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage.
Thank you, Ms. Fister.
Yes.
Violation of the rules for a good cause. I just want to note that somebody had to write all those words, so the Finance Department, kudos for doing that, and hopefully next time they'll do it soon enough that we don't have to do it, read it, because we will have had notice, but we wouldn't even be at this place of making this mid-year budget adjustment, but for the ordinance council passed requiring us to go through this exercise, and even though it was resisted a bit, it's really paying off for us because it's giving us a chance to fix budget holes while we still have the ability to do that. So, kudos to everyone who had something to do with that. Apologies to everyone who had to listen through all that. We have a couple of people who signed up to testify on the special budget ordinances. First was Justin Haller and then Teresa Simon. Welcome back. You have up to three minutes.
Still Justin Haller, still upset with the money you guys steal, take, whatever you want to call it, and what you do with it. Like I mentioned before, with the Rainbow Crosswalks, that's $300,000 that was supposed to go for road calming, but you guys decided, no, 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 we're going to take it and we're going to do something else with it, and then you took another 3.75 million from the excise tax and decided, no, 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 we're going to give that to homeless programs. But these things don't work. They don't, you don't solve any problems with the money you take from us. There's no accountability. There's no progress, there's no metric by which you have been successful with the money you take from us. And then, behind closed doors, for almost three years, you guys raised property taxes creating more homeless by kicking old people out of their homes and kicking people who make a lower income, I won't say low income because that's a whole nother genre, but lower income, kick them out of their apartments because the property taxes don't just go into the ether, they get passed on to the tenants, and seems like nobody seems to realize that except one member on council. And unfortunately, another one voted against it and then backpedaled, and it's just a tragedy that you guys keep raising taxes and give us nothing in return. Look at the $300,000 in Rainbow Crosswalks. Who does that help? 2.5% of the population? How about helping 100% of the population with fixing potholes, fixing the roads, fixing things that actually need to be fixed versus just making up things out of the ether going, oh, I want some special project for this and that and the other thing? You know, the rails, that, you know, who does that help? You know? I don't see anyone except for people with shopping carts going up that steep staircase and the shopping carts are stolen, and that's a crime, but you guys don't go after the crime because that would be logical and make sense. You guys want to defund the police, but then you want extra police at the meetings. There's just no rhyme or reason to what you do with the money you guys take from us. It's deplorable. I wish you would put yourself on a budget like we have had to put ourselves on a budget with the increase in gas, increase in property taxes, and all the increases in taxes that you have created, and then you strangle us with all these taxations and then you just spend the money willy-nilly on special projects for your own agendas. It's deplorable. It's completely deplorable. You've not solved any crime in Spokane. You scattered camp dope to the wind, and I still don't know where the money went from the NGO that went to jewel stealing hands.
We're at the end of your time.
Accountability for the money you steal.
And I don't see Teresa Simon that call out. Okay, I say no. All right, we're going to vote on these SBOs separately, but any council commentary in general across all of them? Yeah, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'm just glad that we're here. As the council president mentioned, this is sort of the result of an ordinance that we passed earlier this year, and so just very thankful for the council in supporting that ordinance twice and getting that passed. I just think it's really important that we be budget hawks at this point in time. We have so many issues right now with our budget. We have to, have to get into the weeds. This really is just the beginning, I think, of some decisions that we're going to have to be making in the near term for next year and the year after. I'll tell you, the numbers are not pretty, and so we've got a lot of work to do, but really grateful that we can take this opportunity to really put some thought into how we can make some tweaks to try to get us a little bit back on track to make those later decisions just a little bit easier on us. So, glad to support these tonight.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I'm in supportive of this as well. Councilmember Cathcart and myself, this mid-year adjustment. A lot of this is money that has already been spent, so it's what we pay the people who have been doing the work, which we have to do and we need to do and we want to do. But historically, we would not do this till in October, November, when we're knee-deep into the budget for the next year. So this really allows us a good snapshot of where we're at and where we need to go
Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle?
Aye.
All right. You're showing up on the board. All right, next one is C three six four one zero, having to do with the family leave, or excuse me, the PFMLA changes in state law that changes premiums for extra benefits for all workers in Washington. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And the next one is the real estate excise tax change, C three six four one one. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle? Oops.
Mine's a mistake.
All right, re-vote on that one. All right, that's seven to zero. All right, back to you, Ms. Fister.
An ordinance, C thirty six four thirteen, needs to be voted on still.
Thank you. That is a change in the asset management fund by eight hundred thousand dollars. Councilmember, prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote? All right, that passed seven to zero. All right.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one stating the Spokane City Council's position on city staff serving in interim capacity.
All right, again, Teresa Simon signed up, but I'm not seeing her. If you want to, okay. So, we have a city charter that says the way that department heads get chosen is the mayor nominates them, and then they have to come to a vote for council. So that's the directions that the voters gave to us. We, as council members, have passed an ordinance to make it clear that when that immediate, when a vacancy immediately happens, the mayor can appoint an interim department head while he or she searches for a permanent person to bring to council for a vote. But there is a limitation on it. They can only serve one hundred and eighty days, and after that, they're ineligible, and someone else has to be appointed as an interim. Unless they go to council and ask for an extension, they can extend for another one hundred and eighty days, and after that, that person can't serve anymore. So, in the last several months, we identified two problems. One, HR wasn't really tracking that and providing information to council. And secondly, that during that period of time, several people served beyond their one hundred and eighty or three hundred and sixty day terms. When we brought that to the attention of the administration, they have now started to appoint those, and we appointed two people today, longtime city employees, to great, positions of great responsibility, and they will fill them greatly. We still have two positions. One is the interim city attorney, and one is the interim chief technology division that we need to get resolved. And so this resolution requests that the mayor comply with the city charter and the ordinances and the will of the people, and basically either appoint new interims who are eligible, who haven't served beyond the one hundred and eighty days without council extension, or bring us candidates for the full-time positions. So, we're asking the mayor to do that. We have asked informally, but we had some feedback from the administration that until we asked formally, that perhaps we were actually agreeing with people serving beyond those rules. So, that's the takeaway. Councilmember Cathcart?
Well, here's my question. In the second Be It Further Resolved, it mentions the mayor bringing forward nominations to city council for permanent appointments. And I can understand the rhetorical, "I nominate you," but if you don't have seven council members, or one of seven council members willing to put that person on the agenda, how does that person appear on the agenda?
It's a good question. No one's asked that prior, or asked the city attorney, but I believe that the, if the mayor's appointing, this is just my opinion, this is one of those things under the charter that the mayor has the power to bring it, so that the council can't freeze out the mayor and say that. I don't think council necessarily would. I think council members would, even if they weren't excited to vote for a person, that they would give the mayor the vote, I think. That would be the best.
Do we know if there's precedence on that?
Can I, yeah.
Yes.
So, okay, I've been here since two thousand and five. I've worked under two or three or four mayors, I lost count. This, to me, is so unbelievable, because what usually would happen in these cases, the mayor would, or somebody from the administration, but usually the mayor would walk over to city council, sit down with council members, and say, "These are my choices. These are why I'm going to bring this forward. Do you have questions?" That's what I have seen throughout my period here. This mayor, as far as I know, has never walked across the hall to talk to us about some of these appointments. And that, to me, is the rub. Because I worked on this, we worked on this four or five years ago because we were trying to clean up the HR, the problems with not only out-of-grade people that were being paid out-of-grade, but also people who had been appointed but needed to be confirmed. And this whole issue is, to me, the problem of the administration and its lack of leadership. I feel very sorry for the people caught in the middle. These are employees, and these are people that have been working for the city. One had, I think, has been here a lot, quite a while. So, to me, I'm just so frustrated, because this didn't have to happen. It would have been so much better if the mayor, or somebody from the mayor's office, until, we did have a conversation today from somebody, but it just didn't happen. And so that's, I'm sorry, I kind of took over. That's my frustration. And I would be the first person to stand up and support this, but we're looking at a campaign season and possibly, or hopefully, a new administration in less than six months. And so, my problem is, do I want to shake everybody's lives up involved in this or disrupt these people's lives for such a short period of time? Because their jobs may change in five, six months anyway. So, it really is, I'm glad we're talking about it, but it's important that people understand that I put blame strictly on the mayor's office for this. We should have had these conversations. That administration should have been overtalking to us. None of this would have happened, and none of these people should be put in this position, because they're sitting at home right now going, "Am I going to have a job? Am I going to be, are they going to approve me?" I mean, this has gone on for how long? Two years? Almost two years? So, I think people need to get an understanding that it wasn't council, we're not being nasty. It's just put everybody in a really tough spot trying to follow the rules and trying to do this right when it wasn't done right in the first place. So, I said it, and I feel better. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, just to round out, I would just say, in addition to some of the just sort of functional process questions that I have over how this would theoretically work, my concerns are kind of similar to Councilwoman Stratton's in that with there's six months left of this existing term, we, and we know for fact, because we've had forty years minus one instance of not re-electing a mayor, and just how challenging it is to find good people when there is a very short period of time left and a question mark as to, you know, elections and those sorts of things. And so, I would be very fearful of losing really good, high-quality people at this point in time, and I really think it would create kind of a chaotic situation for our city. And that's just not something that I want to see. And I think that there are plenty of instances of precedence of allowing, ignoring, not acknowledging the six months going back, well, way back. And so, if we want to lay down the marker that, you know, from here on out, that's great. But I just do not want to see us create a chaotic situation. Let's, I mean, we, this year is just about over, and then there's going to be a whole lot of conversation over what comes next. So, I think we need to just think about how we ensure good governance for our community for these next few months.
Councilmember Kinnear?
So, to answer some of that, Councilmember Cathcart, the mayor has the option right now to put forward those names. So, she could put forward whomever she wants, and it could be the people who have those interim positions. So that is a choice that won't disrupt their lives. It'll give them some certainty.
Councilmembers of the House?
Yeah, Councilmember Cathcart, I have a question for you. I understand the short period right now, but these have been interim since two thousand and twenty-one and May of two thousand and twenty-two, and so that's almost half of an administration, or a quarter of it. And are you supportive of another administration to come in and not have to have department heads approved by council?
Well, I think this conversation is the laying down of the marker, and so I think they're on, they're being forewarned at this point in time with this conversation. But I would say that at any point in time between then and two thousand and twenty-one or then in two thousand and twenty-two, this resolution or something similar to it could have been brought forward to compel these actions. They could have happened right on that six-month mark if we were, you know, so inclined. So, I think it's a shared issue. I don't think it's a one-sided issue, but I do think, I don't disagree that the communication piece is huge, and that is something that's a big part of this, no doubt about it. But at the same time, council has the opportunity and the ability to have taken action long before this, and now we're at a point in time where we have such a small timeframe left that I think the impacts to the city would be very negative if these actions were to take place.
I just, I'm going to just respond just slightly. And one, I think I agree with both of you. It's like, how did we get here? But I just want to make clear that six months ago, I really tried to get this resolved with the administration. But because it was real people and employees working, I did not want to bring up a public thing. I was trying to get them, because these are people who've worked for us, who've worked hard for the city. They don't deserve to be in that situation. So, I just wasn't ignoring it. I went to it multiple times, and I was told, "Yeah, we're working on it. We're working on it. We're working on it." And then, not that long ago, they're, "No, we're not going to do anything." So, it's a challenge for all the reasons that you say. But I think we do, as the keepers of the law, eventually, we need to put a marker down for this administration and the next administration. Otherwise, you could theoretically have people serve eight years without it. And just, you know, there is an ordinance on file. It's pretty clear. So, it's not a happy day or a happy vote, but I think we should do the marker. And as Councilmember Kinnear said, there's multiple options to comply with the law that can be done, and hopefully, that will happen, and the administration will take care of our people. Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you, and I certainly understand the employee position of it. However, this administration has had significant turnover in its leadership and has been served by interim directors in many departments since this administration started. We could go down the list. So, currently, we have an interim city administrator. We could have another interim city attorney, or another interim IT person, or whatever the department could be, and there are qualified people to step up. Is that the best solution? Is that the best thing for people? No, but I'm just saying, they have set precedent with a number of interim department heads over this administration, and it's kind of been a roller coaster, and it has been felt throughout the city and some of the work that needs to be done.
Yeah, I fully support this, and I think that it should be clear to the public that this is essentially a constitutional crisis between the legislative branch and the executive branch, and about what does the charter, which is our constitution, allow us to do? And what does it say we are required to do? And so, to read the charter, it says, again, "The mayor has the power to appoint and remove the administrative heads and assistant administrative heads in each department of the city government, provided the appointment of an administrative head shall be subject to the approval of the city council." Specifically, it calls out the city attorney and says, "The power to appoint and remove the city attorney, provided such appointment, shall be subject to the approval of the city council." It's very clear by our charter, which voters approved, that the mayor, although a strong mayor, cannot act without the approval of city council, that we have the authority to approve. I think for the insight, the functional part of it, it's really important to have the legislative branch trust those department heads. And this is a way that we give our trust and understanding that that person, yes, we believe that person is an expert, that they have that authority, but without us providing that approval, it starts to cast doubt, and we start to have doubt across the board in these departments, whether it's legal advice or IT advice. We start to have doubt, and that creates more problems internally when we're receiving updates here for information, and we start to doubt what information we're getting. So I think it's really important that it's clear, this goes back to the charter, it goes back to ordinances, and it's very clear that this mayor is refusing to comply with the law.
Just one response to that is, and I see Sam Bingle's got his hand up, so, but is, nothing that you read indicates to me that there is a by right access to the agenda by the mayor. It says that city council shall approve, which means we have to take action to put something on our agenda. And if zero out of seven of us are willing to do that, then there is literally no way to comply. So, that is a constitutional crisis, and probably an amendment to our charter that needs to be made.
Well, and I don't, I'm not aware that we've ever refused to put something on, but we could easily put the, an ordinance that says, that says that, that updates that. So, I mean, I think it's a good point. I don't think that's the issue here, but, yeah, I could imagine that situation.
Yes, thank you. I do appreciate the idea that's being presented here, because, again, I do think that we should be bringing people into compliance and making sure that we are doing what's right by the law. I do also love the constitutionality argument. I seem to remember this council asking that mayor to lock me out of the building at one point, which presented its own constitutional crisis that we didn't really care about at the time. But, so I appreciate that. But, the thing that, the biggest problem that I have with this isn't what it's now asking, but the way this came about was that it was very targeted and very direct at one individual. And so for me, I have a hard time believing that we are actually trying to bring the entire city into compliance, but it feels very targeted towards one individual. And that's my biggest problem with it, and I know, Council President, we've had this conversation, and we've discussed this, but it just seems to be, it seems to be a nasty resolution directed at one particular person, and for that reason, I can't support it, even though now, what it's evolved into is something that I don't necessarily disagree with. I think its genesis is gross, and so I won't be supporting it tonight.
Councilmembers of the House?
Councilmember Bingle, I want to be clear.
I'm sorry, hang on.
Councilmember Bingle, I want to be clear. You're supportive of the current resolution as it is written, but you won't vote for it.
I support the ideas that are being presented here. That doesn't mean I support this resolution.
Any other? Go ahead.
Yeah, just to go on the genesis, Councilmember Cathcart and I talked about this a while, about can council members just offer up appointments? And this is actually, the genesis of this resolution comes from a conversation with Councilmember Cathcart, who said, "Well, let's bring it up for a vote." And so, what I first originally wrote was about one person and bringing it up for a vote. And then we said, "Actually, let's, that's too targeted. Let's make this about everyone." We went to HR, and we asked, "What are all the outstanding interim positions that council has to approve that have not done?" And there are only two, and so this resolution now encompasses both of those. So as for the genesis of this, it comes from a conversation about trying to become in compliance, from an idea that came up with a conversation with Councilmember Cathcart, which still goes to your issue, which is, how do we bring up an appointment? We cannot just sponsor an appointment if the mayor does not want that person to be appointed. We can't tell you, "You have to choose this person to be your department, whatever." That mayor has to choose that, and this mayor has refused to nominate anyone for well over a year, and that is not following the law. This is simple, that the mayor refuses to follow the law.
Councilmember Stratton?
So what I would ask everybody to consider, because I'm so torn on this, but I do want to follow the law. If you want to follow the law and support this, and vote yes, then that goes back to the mayor's office. She's got to bring names forward then for approval. And I talked to somebody from the mayor's office, representative from the mayor's office, this afternoon. That may be what we do, is we keep the law intact, we support this. The mayor comes forward with the two appointments, and we vote on those. And I would just ask everybody, as you vote on those, to think about that five, six-month window, that you consider approving them for that five or six months, or approving them, because I think things are going to change, and I just, it's just so disruptive for people's careers and their lives. So, I mean, either way, it's a no-win for us, but maybe that's what we should be thinking about.
Yeah, and I think this resolution calls for that. The mayor's office has known about this resolution for more than a week now and could have resolved this by bringing someone forward in the interim period, or in the last week, but they haven't. This resolution says, "Bring forward nominations to the city council for permanent appointments or replace with an eligible person to be interim." So it is just simply about following the law. For a law-and-order mayor, I would think she would want to follow the law.
And I would publicly invite her to sit down with each one of us before we take a final vote on these appointments, so we know we've touched base and we've had this discussion like we should have done two years ago.
All right, with that, prepare to vote. And Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote? Just let me know when you vote.
Let's roll out.
Okay, the resolution passes five to two. That brings us to another resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-two is tabled indefinitely. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-three, approving the appointment of Kelly Thomas as the manager of sustainability initiatives for the Spokane City Council.
All right, and Teresa Simon signed up for that. Don't see her. Megra Flatman did, if you want to dial star three, Megra. All right, welcome, Megra.
Thank you. Kelly Thomas is an amazing human being, and this is great. That is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Appreciate that. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I think Kelly is fantastic, and I've really appreciated getting to know her and working with her on a number of things. And so, just grateful to have you in the council office. I am not going to support this, and it, to be clear, has nothing to do with Kelly. I think she'll do a great job in any position she's in. I'm not supporting it because I think there's an opportunity right now. You know, we're facing a budget crisis in the city, and I think there's an opportunity. We've got two positions open, one in the council office, one in the mayor's office, and I think we could come together and agree that we are going to set both of those aside to save some money for the good of the city. And that is a discussion that I think we should be having. And so, I just, I don't want to miss that opportunity. I think we need to look at places where we can save. And the last part is, on this, we've adopted the Sustainability Action Plan. And so at this point, I think where the work is really needed, most needed, is really on the administration side in the implementation, not so much on the council side with legislation. So, I'm going to leave it there today, but I just, again, Kelly, you're incredible, and I'm sorry, I can't vote for this tonight, but I love you.
Other council members? Councilmember Stratton?
I love you too, Kelly. Kelly's going to do great in this position. She has been around a while. She knows how to work with groups. She knows how to communicate well and run meetings and deal with conflict. And this is just a natural progression. I'm going to miss her in my office, but this is a good, this is a good move for her, and it's a good move for the city. And I was around during the Werner administration when all of this sustainability plan started, and it's nice to be here to kind of watch it finally moving forward and becoming something really strong and moving forward. So I think Kelly's the right one to do it, and I'll support this.
I was just going to mention that this position has become really important in the city. It not only addresses climate change and climate chaos and all the weather events that we've been dealing with, but it actually saves us money as a city. And we have worked really hard to get a Sustainability Action Plan, but we still have dozens of community volunteers with subject matter expertise. And what this position does is it leverages their knowledge and all that volunteer hours. And right now, they are focused on an implementation plan and working with the administration. And they are right now in the process of delivering bite-sized chunks of that to the full Sustainability Action Subcommittee, but they'll be coming to us. And one thing that's been really great, I agree with Councilmember Cathcart, that we really need to work closer with the administration, but we now have that relationship. Kara really started that, and Kelly's continuing it. So, I think it's really important for the city. Any other commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Thank you, yes. I have a lot of similar things to share about Kelly. She's a great presence in the office. I think she gets along with everybody. She's very smart, she's very generous, she's very kind. I appreciate her presence in the office. But I also don't think that this position should exist, and so because of that, I'm going to be voting against this. But I had already shared with Kelly that I appreciated her and like having her in the office. I think she does a good job, and so I have no doubt that she'll do a good job in this position as well, even if I don't think it should exist. But, Councilwoman Stratton, don't worry. When you lose legislative aid to this position, there is life on the other side. Don't worry.
You're going to help me out, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. All right, well, with that, prepare to vote. And you already told us, Councilmember Bingle, but thank you. All right. All right. That resolution passes five to two. Congratulations, Kelly. Welcome aboard. All right, we're still noting violating the rules, but you know you can get away with it. I guess I'm the last name. Next resolution?
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four, establishing the Municipal Criminal Justice Coordinating Subcommittee of the Public Safety and Community Health Committee.
All right, and again, Teresa Simon, Megra Flatman, you signed up for this as well. Star three. All right, welcome.
Awesome. Former Spokane Regional Law and Justice Administrator Maggie Yates, who is a longtime advocate of justice, recommended this formation. This is great, and that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so just to tee this up, this would, by resolution, be adding a new subcommittee for city council under our Public Justice Committee, and it is modeled after the Spokane Regional Law and Justice Council, which the city was removed from a few years ago. And this reconstituted it, but a little different than some of our subcommittees. Half of the people would be community members, and then the other half would be subject matter experts from within the system and the administration, including the chief of police, the chief judge, the chief prosecutor, the public defender, probation, public safety chair and vice chair. And it would hopefully be that bridge between not only good policy development but implementation to the city to really resolve all the issues that we're, you know, we're struggling with. So, and this, hopefully, we'd get, we would, city council would select the members of it later this fall, and then by the first of the year, be working on it. Any other council, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, thanks for trying to be as thoughtful as you could in putting this together and trying to put some balance in this. I think when we had talked, that was one of my encouragements, was to make sure it was a balanced group. And also, the addition of some of the OPMA requirements, I think that's really good. So, I look forward to supporting this. I think it's really important that we have these conversations and look for ways that we can improve the criminal justice system. And I'm sure there's going to be some things we all disagree on, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to- opportunity for us to fix some things that need fixing.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
I'm just excited about another opportunity for our citizens to become part of our government and to give us direct feedback. We know that we've had some challenges around our communications around public safety. This just provides the opportunity for us all to be together and come up with solutions to many of the challenges that we face, but really building relationship and trust back in our community in the public safety area, I think is critical for us to move forward.
All right. All right, prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next.
Resolution 2023-55, approving installation of automated traffic safety cameras and other matters related thereto.
Did we, just a quick question procedural, did we substitute that? I can't remember. We were going to substitute in Exhibit A?
Yeah, we did.
We did?
During procedure.
All right, great. All right. Yeah, so just, this has a list of locations for cameras near hospitals and parks and schools going forward. In reaction to the legislature giving us the authority to do that, and basically there's a Exhibit A spreadsheet that lists those, those were requested by various neighborhood councils, hospitals, schools, parks, community members and city council members. And the next, it's already gone through police and streets. The next step would go to the vendor, decide whether those would be the final locations, but the city would have approved them. We do have a few speakers, again, Teresa Simon, but we have Dennis Flynn and Maygrah Flotman. Mr. Flynn, if you want to come up.
Hi, Dennis Flynn, live near St. Charles. Are we talking about C36407 as well as the resolution 0055?
This is 055.
Okay, so this is adding 26 new locations in Spokane where you can get a ticket without any officer discretion. It'd be interesting to know how impactful the existing cameras have been to safety or if it's just a money grab. Are we going to be talking about 36407? Expanded use?
Oh yeah, sorry, I'm, it's a little slow. Yeah, we're doing all three resolutions together.
I'm completely against this ordinance to expand usage of these in Spokane, even if state law allows it. I've paid one legitimate ticket over the years, if you consider a one mile an hour rolling stop, red light ticket at Maple and Second, to be legitimate for safety. But I have had to contest three others by sending in the declaration, one of which, without any other notification, they sent a collection saying I didn't reply. Then I had to file a motion with the clerk, spend a day in traffic court to get a judge to pull it out of collection and dismiss it. I'm sure my story is not unique. Not only do I question the legality of these, I also question the efficacy. And I can attest to the pain and the arse of dealing with them, sitting in court for eight hours, waiting until the end of the docket. For anyone listening, I suggest you consider registering the vehicle you drive most in your spouse's name and the vehicle your spouse drives most in your name. Thank you.
Yeah, so I meant to say that we're taking testimony on all three, 55, 56 and 74 altogether. Maygrah Flotman, if you want to dial star three again. I'll let you read those in a second.
0055 says that the funds from tickets are to be equally distributed between all three districts, but that to start with, District One has the first priority. I just want to point out that on page 440 of the city council agenda for July 10th, the location breakdown of where these speed radar cameras will be located shows that District One has a suggested eight speed radar camera locations. District Two has a suggested 18 speed radar locations. And District Three has zero suggested radar camera locations. The cameras aren't equally distributed and the funds aren't either. I just think that that's something to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maygrah, while you're there, a couple of things. One, the District Three locations were inadvertently left out of the packet, but they have been added to it. And then the other thing, just so, just so you know, the funds don't, wherever the cameras are, that's not where the funds go. It goes all into one pot that's distributed, so, but.
Where are the District Three locations listed, do you know?
Well, they're not listed in the packet right now, but someone from council can.
Okay.
If you, if you email A.Martin@spokanecity.org. All right, all right, thank you. Yeah, if you could go ahead and read the other.
Okay. Resolution 2023-56, regarding allocation of funds from infractions issued with automated traffic safety cameras for traffic calming measures and adopting a budget grant agreement to govern the allocation, use and invoicing of a portion of the traffic calming funds by the Spokane Police Department until such time as the dedicated additional funds are exhausted. Resolution 2023-57, regarding allocation of funds from infractions issued with automated traffic safety cameras for traffic calming measures, establishes the timing and criteria for allocation of traffic calming measure funds for the years 2022 to 2025.
All right, thank you. All right, so for any council commentary on any of these three? Councilmember Kinyar?
This is a program that our neighborhoods supported with great enthusiasm. And the difference between 20 miles an hour and 30 miles an hour if a child is hit means injuries versus death. We have seen in our community since COVID, excessive speed, reckless driving, inattentive driving. What these will address is speeding. And it is so important that people who can't pay attention to the rules of the road, can't figure out or can't read a sign, that they're held accountable because other people's lives are at stake. This is not a money grab. This is saying to people, pay attention, there are children here and they need to be protected. So I'm 110% in support of this and I support the neighborhoods. They all participated, gave their locations. They're excited to see this happen. They believe that this will help the issues that they're facing in our neighborhoods right now. So I am supporting this all the way.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I would just say, as I talk to my constituents, there is a lot of frustration right now with traffic control and speeding and aggressive driving and, and I, you know, it was bad before COVID and I think people have taken strong notice of how much worse it is now and that it doesn't seem to be getting better. So I, that is, that is a key issue that folks are concerned about. And so I will be supporting this on their behalf tonight.
Councilwoman Stratton?
We live right off of Northwest Boulevard and it is crazy. Anybody that lives near an arterial like that, there's a park, there's Finch School and Audubon Park and it is, and we have one camera during the school hours, but people still are driving so fast that it's frightening. And I hear, I think Zach does too. We get so many emails from parents, families that are trying to get to the park, trying to walk for a cup of coffee, trying to get their kids to school. And the traffic just, not only has it increased, but people just keep speeding down there. So I'm very supportive of this.
Three things I just wanted to point out. One, the police department disbanded their traffic enforcement unit in order to have enough officers to do patrols and respond to real-time calls. So that's another issue. Secondly, these cameras, the way they're set up by our vendor is they only click if someone's going eight miles or more over. So it's not on that. And then the third thing is, the money goes, once the expenses are paid for the program, the money goes to actual projects and programs that support traffic calming in the area. So it does not go into the general fund on that. And then Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, thank you. I have some reservations on the cameras in general, but I, what really opened my eyes to the need for some of these was, we, as we were trying to get a dog park up in my district, which unfortunately may not happen, we heard a lot from the people on Upriver about the speeds that people were driving up and down there. And we, we'd heard it before, you know, and, well, we had, we requested the police go out there and do a traffic special. And sure enough, it was, it was pretty remarkable how many people weren't just driving 10 over or 20 over or 30 over, but driving well above the speed limit, far, far greater than 30 miles an hour over the speed limit on a very narrow, windy road. One of the stories was, you know, a man driving with, while using his cell phone with, you know, his toddler in the, in the back, which is just so incredibly dangerous for both he and then also the helpless passenger in the, in the backseat there. And so while I've got my reservations about what's going on, you know, again, I just think about, again, you know, that, that, you know, potentially being me with my son in there and something bad happening. And so I just think we need to do what we can do. I wish the state didn't take as much money as they were going to be taking, but, you know, I think it's going to be good for us, so I'll be, I'll be supporting this tonight.
All right, and with, without, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because we keep getting misconceptions about some of the crosswalks, community crosswalks and murals.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify because there's still some misconceptions about the cost for some of the community crosswalks and street murals. We allocated $50,000 per crosswalk because we didn't know how much they would be. And that was estimates from other places around the country, but it came in well under that at $10,000. So it is not going to cost $300,000 for all the crosswalks. We are going to come on way under budget, $10,000 for the crosswalk and like 8,500 for the mural. So just wanted to clarify that.
And those are, at least in some studies, demonstrate traffic calming as well. All right, unless there's an objection, I propose that we vote on Resolution 54 on the locations, 55 on, excuse me, 55 on the locations, 56 on the allocation of some money for police patrols and radar, and then 57 on the allocation formula as all as one. So prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. All right, those all pass seven to zero. All right, next we have, and there's no public comment on it, but two appointments. If you could read both appointments and we can take those together.
Resolution 2023-58, approving the appointment of Dan Buller as the Director of Engineering Services for the city of Spokane. And Resolution 2023-59, approving the appointment of Marsha Davis as the Director of Integrated Capital Management for the city of Spokane.
All right. Any council commentary? Council? Okay, thumbs up, yep, great choices. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Marsha and Dan, for all your service to date and in the future. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote on these two? Are you there, Councilmember Bingle? Oh, he texted me, aye. Okay. All right, that passes seven to zero. All right, ordinance on a vacation.
Do you want to do Resolution 2023-62 next?
Oh, yeah.
The one on the legislative, okay. This one I'll read in its entirety. Resolution number 2023-62, a resolution by the Spokane City Council affirming the legislative priorities of the city of Spokane for 2023 to 2024 sessions of the Washington State Legislature. Whereas the City Council of the city of Spokane sets policy for the city of Spokane, including the legislative agenda. And whereas the City Council of the city of Spokane, in consultation with the administration, previously outlined its priorities for the 2023 session of the Washington Legislature. And whereas the city of Spokane's expressed 2023 legislative priorities, set forth specific funding requests related to transportation, infrastructure and safety. And whereas Sunset Boulevard and the Leita Bridge constitute a principal arterial and an important freight route connecting downtown Spokane and West Plains as part of the city's bike master plan, as well as used by Spokane Transit Authority for routes connecting downtown Spokane with the city of Airway Heights and Spokane International Airport. And whereas Leita Bridge has historical significance, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places in the Washington Heritage Register, but is nearing the end of its usual life and is in need of substantial rehabilitation, including widening of the existing bridge deck, improved safety conditions for pedestrian cyclists, improvement in infrastructure support for utilities and other major improvements, with the expected to cost associated with the project to be approximately $64.7 million. And whereas the City Council wishes to formally add the rehabilitation of Leita Bridge to its 2023 legislative priorities agenda, therefore it is resolved that the city of Spokane's 2023 Legislative Transportation Priorities Agenda be amended to include funding of $64.7 million for the rehabilitation of the Leita Bridge. Further resolved, the city endorses the addition of the Leita Bridge Rehabilitation Project to the 2024 Unified List of Regional Transportation Priorities of the Spokane Regional Transportation Council.
All right, so this is an amendment to our legislative agenda, just to make it clear that we are on the record as advocating for repairing Leita Bridge, which is in great need of repair. It's also expensive. And by going on the record, it should help us qualify for state and federal funds. We have one person testifying, Maygrah Flotman, if you want to dial star three.
Repairing this bridge is really important. I just want to add that on June 29th special session, I believe it was Councilmember Kinyar who mentioned that the budget happens to be eight million in the hole. And tonight, again, we heard a lot of council members mentioning that money was being tight and being thought, or it was a thought to take it away from other important things. This is also a very important thing, but on this last minute addition, there's no breakdown of the almost $65 million it will take to repair this bridge. And there's no breakdown as to where that money is exactly coming from or exactly going to, and that's important as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Maygrah. And again, just to be clear for anyone watching, especially because you can't read it, this isn't saying that we're spending this money. We're just asking the state and federal government to provide us money to repair the bridge. I think, any council commentary? All right, prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle?
Aye.
All right. All right, that passes seven to zero. Next one?
Ordinance C36166, vacating Perry Street between the north line of Hartson Avenue and the south line of Celesta Avenue. First reading held January 24, 2022.
All right, there's no public comment still here in the room. Any council commentary? Seeing none? Yes.
I think Eldon is still here.
Oh, Eldon.
Eldon, thank you for staying with us this late.
I think you shared with us today, so I don't think we need to do a presentation.
I don't think so.
It's pretty clear. And this will lead to more housing, affordable housing in Spokane, so we're super excited about that. All those are, prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. All right. Continue on.
Ordinance C36400, relating to parking municipal codes, amending Spokane municipal code sections 8.02.083, 16A.04.100, 16A.05.060, 16A.05.220, .280, .310, .460, 16A.07.040, .080, and adding new section 16A.05.155 to chapter 16A.05 of the Spokane municipal code and setting an effective date.
All right, Megra Flatman, you've signed up to testify, if you want to hit star three. Welcome back.
Thank you. On page 486 of July 10th City Council Agenda, this ordinance says, "We do not collect data on race, ethnicity, gender, income level, disability, sexual orientation, or other existing disparities." But this is not necessarily true. Emails uncovered during the Office of the Police Ombudsman's December 2022 report contradict the claim that the city does not collect this data. May 7, 2021, a Spokane citizen wrote to the Chief of Police, quote, "We need SPD to connect the dots to determine if our vagrants and low barrier housing are contributing to violent crime." Five hours later, the police chief forwards that email and clarifies, quote, "I believe what Sheldon is asking is if there is a way to track violent crime associated with the homeless in Spokane." There was not, at the time, a way to track this, but on June 29, 2021, less than two months later, the Chief of Police follows up and says, quote, "Regarding Sheldon's request about incidents related to homeless, we were able to get New World updated to allow us to start tracking this. Existing disparities, such as not having a roof to call home, are being tracked." Thank you.
All right, thanks, Megra. Any council commentary on these parking code updates? All right, seeing none, prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next up.
Ordinance C 36401 relating to the sales and use tax for housing and housing-related supportive services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 8.07(c).030 and 8.07(c).050.
All right, this essentially is providing legal guidance to the CHHS department on how to advertise for and choose projects to fund with the 1590 sales tax for affordable housing of people with median incomes of less than 60%, not median income, 60% of the average median income. We have Megra Flatman again, and then John Alder, if you're here, come on down, John. Megra, if you want to hit star three again?
This funding is incredibly needed, and thank you to everyone who responded to my email that I sent last night clarifying the language on this. The Spokane Municipal Code Section 08.07 Charlie dot 030 Charlie recommends that revenue shall employ a racial equity framework. And then also, page 511 of tonight's July 10th Agenda, says that the racial impact assessment tool will be utilized post-award despite race not being identified as one of the groups to fund. And so I sent an email asking about that. Thank you so much to everyone who replied. It was clarified that this exact wording came from the state. And so while the racial equity tool to assess post-award is a Spokane tool, it's not something that can be identified in this exact legal use that came from the state. Oh, I'm so sorry. I had to change this up last minute. This funding is incredibly helpful, and I think that it's going to groups that need it, groups that are at risk. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Megra. John Alder?
John Alder, Northeast Spokane. I heard a ridiculous rumor that a pickleball court would be built on $1590. Let the enthusiasts who play the game pay for the court. $1590 was voted on to increase spending for low-income housing, and that's the way it should be. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any council commentary? All right, I will just say special thanks to Nicolette Ocultree for working with the Housing Action Subcommittee and bringing council's concerns and coming up with something that is really going to be good guidance for CHHS and any other planned uses of 1590 funds. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle?
Nay.
All right, that passes six to one. Next.
Ordinance C 36402 relating to the establishment of a process to consider and act upon community members' concerns regarding city-owned property, adopting a new chapter 18.10 to Title 18 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
All right, this establishes a process that if anyone has concern with a particular monument, statue, street, or location name that's related to city-owned property, how they can bring that concern forward and how the city as a government could resolve those concerns. We have a few people requesting to testify. Dennis Flynn, Megra Flatman, Will Hewlings, Michael McGuire. Welcome.
Thank you. Dennis Flynn, live near St. Charles. Last council meeting, I tried to speed read my concerns about this over the phone, and you asked me to email you, and I did. And I got some responses back right away, saying, "Thank you for, we received your email," but nothing since. If any of the recommended changes I suggested were incorporated, I couldn't tell because it looks to be the exact same length as it was in the last agenda. And it still contains a word salad of imprecise language and poorly described process that I would think somebody who wants to leave a concise municipal code as part of their legacy would be identifying as needing to be basically completely rewritten. I use the definition section to make the definitions of the terms, use the terms to identify the process. I'm not against having this process, I'm just for having concise, easily understandable city municipal code. Thank you.
Thank you. Megra, you want to hit star three?
This ordinance stems from a Human Rights Commission resolution. This is why Spokane created the Spokane Human Rights Commission. We should listen to them. This is great. This is why I have to say thank you.
All right. Will Hewlings. After Will is Michael McGuire.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, proud U.S. Navy veteran. I served honorably. I'm against this, obviously. I mentioned that last week. Obviously, I read why. I mean, that statue over in front of the Spokane Club, that's a U.S. Navy veteran just like me, so. But I'm concerned, and I'm also a community member, and I'm reading this because I'm, these are the definitions that they had on this. But I just find it disgusting that they're going through, because basically, so an individual who, let's see, individuals who are having mental pain, suffering or feel disrespect or are offended, basically, they can contact the Spokane Human Rights Commission, and then they're going to have a work group that's going to look into this, and then on their recommendation, they're going to come and contact you guys, and they basically want to have a say-so in renaming property, recontextualizing it, also relocating maybe a statue. I mean, to me, they're doing this nationwide. I mean, like I mentioned, Fort Liberty used to be Fort Bragg. I mean, a lot of military service, but because of the Civil War and you guys don't want to acknowledge history because everything now is racist, I'm a minority, and I just find it crazy. Like, why can't we just, like, just leave things the way they are? Because once you start changing stuff, you're going to disrespect. I talked to a family member of that statue, and she, I haven't seen her here since, but it's just kind of nasty that you guys, because some civil, social justice, that's what I call them, social justice warriors, feel offended, they can come and basically, I don't know. But anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Michael McGuire?
Thank you, Council President Beggs, members of the Spokane City Council. The statue of John Robert Monahan, Ensign, U.S. Navy, should not be removed. John Monahan graduated from Annapolis in 1887. He died on Samoa on April 1, 1899, defending his lieutenant, who had been wounded. Ensign Monahan could have fled, yet he stayed with his friend. Ensign Monahan was later killed. Courage is easy to say, yet sometimes difficult to do. John Kennedy had courage by serving, by saving his PT 109 crew. The men at Normandy waited two, they were canceled twice, and the men at Normandy finally, with Eisenhower's did go ahead in the bad weather, showed courage as they advanced to the, to the German beaches. So please keep the statue of John Monahan, and let's have the courage to forgive, as I believe Ensign John Monahan would have wanted. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
I, I'll be very brief. I'm not going to get there tonight on this one. I think this really is interjecting a lot of subjectivity when we really need objectivity, and my, a real easy way for me to think about this is if I were to strike city-owned property and insert books, how would I feel? And to me, that really kind of tells me everything I need to know, and I just, I see this as a slippery slope, and so I will not be supporting this tonight.
Councilmember Stratton?
I want to thank Alex. He's sitting there in the audience tonight. He spent a lot of time on this, what, two years have we been talking about this and bringing people together? Council's received, I know I've received emails and phone calls, and it's, sometimes you can get lost in all the opinions and what to do with them, and so I think Alex did a really good job working with the Human Rights Commission and the community in, you know, focusing on what that issue is and what that process could be or should be when this comes up. By no means does it mean that statue is going to be removed, but it does provide a process for community to come together, just like we did with Stock's Way, and have all of those voices heard as we, you know, try and work our way through some of these historical areas that, that we hear about. So I really appreciate your input and your work on this, Alex.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
I'm going to echo Councilmember Stratton. This is not making a decision about the Monahan statue. This is really, again, the process. I think there'll be other issues that come before City Council, and then we would like to be consistent in how we address these issues that come before us, whether it's statues or streets, and so the people really understand what that looks like. So I will be in support. This is first out the gate. This may evolve. We don't know yet, as things may change in how we perceive it, but we have to start somewhere to move forward with this, whether you support it or don't support it. Everybody will have the opportunity to have input on what happens.
Councilmembers, you're pumped.
Yep, I'll also be supporting this. I think that this provides a process for people when they have issues, and I think that's important because right now there is no process, and we've been at a standstill when there are issues of concern. I believe that this is nothing like books, that items in the right of way and city-owned property are reflective of a time period and reflective of our values and what we believe, and I think that's important for us to have a process as our values evolve over time. Books and freedom of ideas and exchange will still exist, and items can change and exist and evolve. I'm, I worked at a high school and attended a high school that's had to change its mascot, and I think that these things evolve and change, and it's important to remember those two and why we're making those changes too. And so this provides a way for us to process that.
All right, prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle?
No.
All right, that passes five to two.
Ordinance C 36403 establishing the motto of the city of Spokane and adopting a new section, SMC 1.03.030.
All right, so this would, a previous motto that the mayor decided, a previous mayor decided was Spokane, the city of choice. This would replace that by ordinance with In Spokane, We All Belong, and it focuses on belonging, really as a bridge of healing our community and recognizing that everybody has a place in the community, and focusing, although this is simply a motto, strategies and work in the future so that all people will feel like they have a sense of belonging in Spokane. We have two community members, Dennis Flynn and then Megra Flatman. Mr. Flynn?
Thanks, Dennis Flynn, live near St. Charles. Just, the only thing I had about this was speaking towards the future, right, and, and everybody belonging and, and being indicative of growth that we would want for our community. I was just suggesting, and I emailed this to you, I'm sure it's too late to change this, and it'll be passed, but Spokane, you belong here.
Thanks, Dennis. Megra Flatman, if you want to hit star three? Welcome.
In Spokane, We All Belong is a great bridge because right now there's a lot of attacks on people in Spokane. We're not listening to the spoken Human Rights Commission, who suggests how to make everyone in Spokane feel belong. A couple weeks ago, we voted to criminalize people who live, who live on the streets, who may be in parks after hours, and there's nowhere to go. There's no shelter space. There's nothing. In Spokane, We All Belong is great words, but they still ring hollow unless we follow that up with action. And while it's a great bridge, we absolutely need to continue moving forward. We need to listen to Spokane Human Rights Commission resolutions when they suggest things. We need to listen to the recently staffed Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion. We need to actually provide action to make people in Spokane feel like we all belong. Thank you.
Thank you, Megra. Council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson?
Well, I will certainly be in support of this. We do all belong. I had shared that this is a word that is being used across our state in many of our businesses because people need a sense of belonging. When they belong, then we can start moving forward together. It is a bridge word. I said today we just start looking at steps that we could do as council and a city to make people feel like they all belong, and when this is passed, that will be the work that will be before us.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I don't know if we can make people feel like they belong, but hopefully we can create the, the space where people do feel like they all belong. I, I offered an amendment earlier today on this that, that would have got me there. I, I offered an amendment earlier today on this that, that would have got me there. And, and my, my, my suggestion was that we, we essentially adopt this as our provisional motto. And I have absolutely no issues with that. I think it makes a ton of sense. It's, it's a really good, well-thought-out motto. But as we already heard from one person even just this evening, when it comes to, to the idea of belonging, specifically this concept of belonging, there's a thousand different ways you can word that. And is there buy-in on this particular phrase and the way this was, this has come about? I appreciate the Council President's work on this and, and all the time that he's put in on this, but I just feel there needs to be, before this becomes the officially adopted permanent motto of the city, that there should be some public process, much like we had with our city flag. It was a multi-year, I believe it took almost two years for that process to run its course. And the great thing about it was it ended in this sort of direct democratic process where folks literally voted on the flag that they wanted. And, and so I would love to see a process that has that sort of inclusion where we can really kind of narrow down, and maybe it's this. Alternatively, in my amendment, simply putting this on as an advisory so that the public could have that buy-in, I think would also be really beneficial. Again, I don't have any issues with the phrase. I think the phrase is, is great, but I think if that's going to be our motto, we want as much buy-in around that as we can. With the city flag, that flag was not one that I particularly voted for, but at the end of the day, I fully respect it, support it, because I know that that was, at the end of the day, what the community wanted. And so I just want our motto, whatever that is, to be something that the community can rally around and, and truly stand behind and, and tell us that they stand behind. So I won't support it tonight, but, but I do appreciate the Council President and, and his work on this.
Councilmember Zepham.
Yeah, I will be supporting this. I have a little different philosophy. I, I don't disagree with more buy-in, but my philosophy is more like, if you build it, they'll come. And so the more we start using it, the more people will know about it and start identifying with it. I don't believe a motto is as permanent or meaningful, or not meaningful, as permanent as a flag. Motos change, and they have changed over time for the city of Spokane. And I think a great example of that is our former one, Near Nature, Near Perfect, which was just marketing. And that became really well-known throughout the city and throughout the region. So I hope that this one that conveys the new, new values, new ideas for our region and takes us to the next era, this post-COVID era of belonging. I, I think Council President Beggs for beginning us through that process. And I think the important thing here is it's more than just the words. It's about the actions and the beliefs. And council just had a, a training about belonging the other week about it. So we are not just using words, but we're trying to implement those words and live by those words to create a more, I mean, a, a place where more people feel like they belong.
If there's not any more, then I will just do a couple of final comments. One, I thank everybody for considering this and working on this. For the last two years, we've been sharing it with various community groups and having positive impact. The one concern that we heard from some people was that, boy, I don't feel like I belong yet. So it was almost a little bit triggering and painful. And there was really a debate out there. Should we say We All Belong, aspiring to do that work and, and pointing in that direction? Or should we not say it out of recognition for the people who don't experience that yet? And the vast majority of the people and groups that we've spoken to when we've done outreach have said, no, let's, let's enact the motto. Let's, let's do it, because we are going to be that kind of city. And I think what I most appreciated about the training that we had last week is we opened it up at the library, and thanks to the library for hosting us. But a lot of community members came, leaders from all different groups, all different corners of the city, representing different cultures and groups. And it was really the first time for me that I had seen this particular diversity of leadership and people coming together around it. And it really told me that even though Spokane has its own history of, of challenge and pain and division and brokenness, that we really can come together and create belonging, no matter where we come from. And so I am quite hopeful that Spokane will continue to lead the way in belonging. And it's a little bit like, once you get a new car, suddenly you see all the other cars that are the same model. But really, I've seen that all around the nation and really the world in the last few months, that everyone's kind of talking about belonging. So I appreciate the opportunity for Spokane to do it. And as far as further public outreach, we had a great presentation from Spokane Arts on a campaign of belonging, including graphics and T-shirts and, and using our flag as part of the imagery around that. So thank you for your consideration and prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle.
Nay.
That passes five to two.
Ordinance C-36404, adopting policy standards for broadband infrastructure expansion.
All right. This puts in law at the city of Spokane some principles for developing broadband for the benefit of the entire community and all people, especially people who have been, found themselves on the other side of the digital divide. We have one speaker who signed up, Magra Flatman. You want to dial star three.
The question. Please wait to see until the host call function. You are up today. Internet is incredibly important to a 21st century life. This ordinance correctly identifies just how vital internet is and how there are gaps. On page 535 of July 10th City Council Agenda, the summary for this ordinance correctly states that those who fall in these gaps are, quote, "at a disadvantage in pursuit of economic growth opportunities, education, health care, and other significant areas critical for a successful quality of life." That's true. This is very accurately identified. This is a great ordinance. These people need internet, and the city broadband infrastructure expansion should be free. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. I just, I had an interesting thought this morning, thinking about this, and I'm not even sure if the Council President recalls, but probably five or six years ago, I think we had dueling op-eds on the issue of broadband. And I just think it's interesting that, kind of full circle, we're able to come together and find sort of a compromise, good governance way to, to move these big ideas forward that will support the whole community. And so I'm glad to support this tonight. And the one piece that I kind of contributed to the ordinance was trying to add some data privacy language in there that I think is really important. And so hopefully that will be a, a key part of, of anything that comes out of our path forward. So happy to support tonight.
All right. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Ms. Fister, we defer ordinance 36405 on parking regulations.
Right.
Okay. So I didn't catch that earlier, but there were a couple of people who had signed up to that. But that will be on the?
Seventeenth.
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 All right. First reading ordinances.
Ordinance C-36407, concerning the use of automated traffic safety cameras, extending the termination date for authorization to use automated traffic safety cameras, expanding the use of said cameras to school walk areas, public park speed zones and hospital speed zones, and amending section 16A.64.220 and 16A.64.260 of the Spokane municipal code. Further action is deferred on first reading ordinances.
All right. Mr. Flynn has signed up. Come on up. He's passing. I just wanted to say special thanks to Abby Martin on all the traffic calming work that she was involved in tonight, and also ably assisted by Policy Advisor Chris Wright, who learned all about traffic calming the last two weeks. We have still remaining some hearings, I think.
H-1A, hearing regarding proposed initiative 2023-4, petition signatures filed on behalf of Brian Hanson petitioner regarding prohibiting encampments near schools, parks, playgrounds, and childcare facilities. H-1B, first reading ordinance C-36408 regarding prohibiting encampments near schools, parks, playgrounds, and childcare facilities.
We don't have any public comment for that. And you told us once today, but it was many hours ago. What are our options are?
Under SMC 2.02.080 and Section 84 of the city charter at the hearing, the city council determines whether to, one, grant the petition and pass the measure as requested; two, accept the petition but decline to pass the measure as requested, and direct the city clerk to validate the signatures; or three, to propose an alternative measure to either be adopted by the city council or submitted to the voters on the city council's own motion.
Is there a motion to adopt option two? Send it to the auditor for signature gathering.
Isn't that what we've done in the past? Yes. I would move that.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of option two indicate by saying aye.
Sorry, Council President. Sorry, I, I do have some commentary here. Sorry.
Councilmember Bingle.
Couldn't unmute, fasten. Has, has this been our historic practice of the council?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right. Ms. Fister, make that happen. And then now that brings us to H-2.
H-2, final reading ordinance C-36391 relating to the regulation of short-term rentals, amending Spokane municipal code, section 17C.316.010, .020, .030, .040, .050, .060, and .070, and setting an effective date.
All right. This is updating the regulations on short-term rentals. We have two people wanting to testify, John Alder and Dennis Flynn. John, do you have any, you waived?
I remember one was supposed to testify, but I couldn't do that.
Okay. Must not have gotten you signed up, but you heard what we did on one. We didn't approve it. We just sent it for signatures. Mr. Flynn.
Are we doing 91 and 92 together?
Uh, yeah, we are going to do amendment two.
And I've got one to offer, so.
Okay, great. Mr. Flynn.
Hi, thanks, Dennis, lived near St. Charles. Last meeting, I commented on this. I was dialed in on the phone, because I was at a short-term rental. The reason I was able to take my four children and my in-laws to this place was specifically because of the availability of short-term rentals with ample sleeping spaces, whether those spaces were in a bedroom, such as for my wife and for my in-laws, or if they were multiple bunk beds against a wall in a common room, such as for my kids. In other words, I was able to make a family getaway out of a very frugal budget, which, by the way, I only have because of other adulting decisions, like driving 20-year-old cars and using prepaid cell phones and not subscribing to cable Disney Prime and all the other things, every, all the other things people think are necessities. And we visited and spent money in a location we otherwise wouldn't go. And guess what? Plenty of people do that same thing, utilizing short-term rentals in Spokane. Other people enjoy the full meal deal service of a hotel. So let's make it easier to provide choices for hospitality services while allowing our citizens here to make a little extra cash that they undoubtedly will spend locally. Let's make that easier, not harder.
Thanks, Dennis. Is your amendment, councilmember, on the first one or the second one?
92. The second one.
Okay, great. All right. Any commentary on the first one? All right. Just special thanks to all the planning staff and council staff that worked on updating this work. It will, I think, achieve what Mr. Flynn proposed, which will make it easier to operate them, but also make them a little bit safer, and they will be an option within reason, which is different than many communities which are outlawing them. So I think we're in a nice sweet spot in that. Prepare to vote.
Hey, I apologize, I'm having some issues here on connection. I don't know which one we're talking about.
Okay, we're talking about hearing two, C-36391. It's the first of the short-term rental ordinances.
Oh, yeah. Did we figure out on the short-term rentals, the fee situation that we were talking about earlier?
That's next. That's the next one.
Gotcha. Okay.
Do you, are you an aye on the?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. That passes seven to zero. And then the last item for the night, for those of you who've been long-suffering.
H-3, final reading ordinance C-36392 relating to fees on short-term rentals and short-term rental platforms, amending Spokane municipal code, sections 8.02.034, .066, and 8.08.010, adopting a new section 8.02.090 to chapter 8.02 of the Spokane municipal code and setting an effective date.
All right. So the first, we got a, a draft amendment from Spencer.
That was my amendment.
Oh, that's your amendment?
So, yeah.
Oh, okay. So I'll just read it. So it is in section, so the proposed amendment is 0802090, short-term rental license fee. And in section D, after the phrase exclusively for purposes, there is an insert of acquiring, rehabilitating, or constructing housing affordable to low-income and moderate-income households as defined in SMC 08.15.020. And then at the very end of the sentence, this section. So that's the proposed amendment. Is there a motion to adopt that?
Also move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right. There's the amendment, and I believe, Ms. Fister, did you get emailed that? Or if you want to see a copy, you got it.
Yes.
Okay. All right. We do have, so this is also regarding short-term rentals and creates some further provisions, including a small platform fee that is going to be used for replacing the affordable housing that the short-term rental is using up. And I think it's $4 a night. Okay. But with that, I have John Alder and Dennis Flynn signed up again. I don't see John, and you're done as well. Any other council commentary? All right. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. All right. It's another seven to zero. That brings us to the end of our formal thing. I promised to be super brief, because everyone has been here so long. But I do want to recognize, I have two special guests in the audience. My wife, Lori Powers, right there, and my son, Carter Powers-Beggs. As you might imagine, my family, which also includes my twin daughters in New York who send their regards, have been just completely invaluable in supporting me in public service. We also have an amazing staff, current and past at City Council. And we've tried to mention several of them, but there's a few people whose names didn't come up today, and I just want to read them out so that you know. Mark Carlos, Candy Davis, Lisa Gardner, Jacobi Bird, Eric Poulsen, Jeff Gunn, and Shay Blackwell. I think everyone else has been recognized. I want to recognize the TV5 people for always being here and amazing to us. I want to recognize the media. Most of them have gone, but they have been here. And we have two interns from the Spokesman Review, WAVE, two high school interns. Thanks for coming. I also want to thank council regulars. Many of you come every week and speak your mind and your truth. And I appreciate it, whether we agree or disagree. Your dedication is noticed. And you, like everybody else, I believe, cares deeply about this city. I already thanked you, my fellow council members, but I will just mention you briefly. But I have learned three things, just simply. One, we can all learn from each other. I, every meeting, learn from each other. I came to this council as a lawyer, very confident that I had figured out all the answers. answers. And every week is a lesson in humility of learning that there is something that I had not thought of, an experience I had not considered, a better way forward. And most of our ordinances have been compromises. And frankly, most of them, at the end of the day, are seven-zero votes. So that's a credit to us. The second thing that I've learned is that we all have more in common than not. And when we focus on what we have in common, life goes better. And the third most important thing, and the most important thing to me, is that people are the most important thing. So thank you for all that you have done to support me in these years. And although I have to leave the political fray under the ethics of being a judge, know that I will be rooting for all of you to find your way and to find a better way in Spokane. And I leave you with my two favorite phrases. When Spokane leads, Washington follows. And in Spokane, we all belong. Thank you. We're adjourned.[1772.61][1772.61][applause]